Good evening. This is the regularly scheduled city council meeting for the City of Calistoga. It is Tuesday, January 2nd at 6:01 PM. Happy New Year, everyone. City Clerk Flamson, sorry, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Here.
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Councilmember Kraus?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunstford?
You can open the side door here if you guys want to stand on the outside there. Okay? Right here. Roll call again, please.
Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Here.
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Councilmember Kraus?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunstford?
Here.
Mayor Canning?
Here, thank you. If you could also take a moment to make sure your cellphones are silenced, we'd appreciate that. All right, if you could please stand and join for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody nice and cozy? If someone's standing, looks like they're going to start to get tired. Someone's sitting, you want to switch out a chair with them every now and then? Musical chairs? All right, we will start with oral communication on consent items or non-agendized items. This time is set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters on the consent calendar or matters of municipal concern that are not on the agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, also known as the Brown Act. However, the council cannot consider any issues or take action on any request during this comment period. Speakers are encouraged to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes so that all speakers have an opportunity to address the city council. As most of you know, in 2012, this city council chose to adopt Rosenberg's Rules of Orders for parliamentary procedure, so there is no allotment of your time to another speaker, no yielding of your time to another speaker, and we politely request that you understand as strongly as you feel about your position, someone else feels about theirs, so we'll treat each other with respect. Is there anyone wishing to address the council on a non-agendized item? All of the speaker cards I have are for agendized items. Yes, sir. Please approach the podium. These meetings are televised by law, so what we will ask when you do eventually make it up to the podium, should you so choose, share with us your name and the address, your address, but please speak into the mic because there is a vast home audience. And again, please limit your comments to three minutes. Yes, sir.
My name is Dutch Farha, and I live in Calistoga Springs, 74 Holly. I've got two questions. The first is, what have you done to our roads and why aren't they finished? So you don't have to answer me, just set it aside and think about it. Okay, the other thing is, what's happened to our golf course? Is it really going to open again? You're not giving up on it, I hope, because I'm one of those old guys that goes out there and plays. And then the other one, I said two, but I got three.
Fire away.
Uh-huh. There are no bikes on the sidewalks. There are no signs anymore, and there's two blocks that we need signs. I walk these streets every day, and every day, somebody's riding behind me and doesn't know that they would say coming from the right or the left. So I think you ought to either get new signs and then enforce it, because we don't need bikes and skateboards on those two blocks of the sidewalk where all the traffic is.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you very much. Director Kern, you're here, I see you in the back. Can you give us 30 seconds about the roadways? Because we, as many of you know, we have, some of the roads that we were refinishing got paused in the middle, and Mike Kern is our Director of Public Works, so we can address your question very quickly.
Good evening, Mike Kern, Public Works Director. The condition of the streets are what they are for right now. The condition of the streets are what they are for right now. We had a contractor come in, start doing chip seal and slurry seal. They were interrupted by the Tubbs fire. They had to pull off the job. After they got back into town, they were able to finish what they could do, weather permitting. The balance of the work that needs to be done is the application of the asphalt emulsion, which is a water-based product, which needs to have, the pavement needs to be 50 degrees and rising before they can put it down, and the temperature of the air needs to be 65 degrees for an extended period of time. Because we have not had any of those weather conditions, we've had to suspend work. I would rather have the project be successful in total, rather than try and do something haphazardly just to get it done and not have a proper product at the end of the day. The contractor is aware of areas where they're going to have to come back and do some spot patching, but it's all weather-dependent.
Thank you very much. Regarding the golf course, that is a matter for the Napa County, but I do have some new information on the JPA discussion, the Joint Powers Authority discussion between the City of Calistoga and the County of Napa. Obviously, because of the fires in October, those meetings were postponed, so tentatively scheduled for January 30th, the Board of Supervisors will have a public hearing and potentially take a vote on their participation in the JPA. Shortly thereafter, the City of Calistoga City Council will schedule our public hearing. As you know, we've already had a community forum on that subject. All right, so that'll address the golf course, and I know that the city manager has taken a note about the bikes on the sidewalks, and there used to be painting on the ground, and we could look into some other options there. Thank you. Anyone else?
I would like to...
Please.
My name is Sheila Allen. I live at 1906 Foothill Boulevard. I live right on the speed trap, okay? It's 35 miles an hour speed limit. Those cars are going 50 to 60 miles an hour shooting by my house, and those machines that the police put up there saying your speed limit, they should be up there all the time, and there should be more patrol officers, because they stop at Lincoln, then they start to speed up like heck, thinking they're going, you know, on Highway 29, 50 miles an hour, and they zoom by my house. I mean, they were zooming by my house, like I was putting my garbage, I go, whoa! So, you know, it's like, it's very dangerous. Why can't they put a speed bump, or why can't they put a stop sign there where everybody has to stop? It's right in the middle before you get to Petroright Forest Road. So, I mean, I'm a homeowner, I'm going to stay in Calistoga, you know, I'm retired, and I, I mean, I just hate that. I would never look out my front because of that trap of speed people. I have to look out my back to see I'm in a pretty area.
Thank you.
That I live in, okay? So if we could do something about that, I really would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have looked at putting some of those automatic speed signs around town, they have been effective. The challenge unfortunately we have in your road, as you probably know, is our friends at Caltrans. It's not insurmountable, it's not insurmountable, but we have convinced them into other items, other matters. From past speeding issues we've had in town, we do know this, and you've heard me say this before, and our police chief has said it before, the vast majority of people speeding through town tend to be locals because they feel they know the roads, so they can get around more quickly. Anyone else want to address the council on a non-agendized item? Non-agendized item.
Not about water.
Not about water.
Come on, Karen, you...
Karen, you know how this works.
I forgot.
I got the bridge construction in. I'm checking on my bridge.
The bridge construction's coming right along. February, the beginning of February will be the Berry Street Bridge, and then the Lincoln Avenue Bridge will be like 2040 or something like that, so we'll be fine. That was in the paper last week, not that. All right, anyone else under non-agendized items or under oral communication? All right, with that said, I will close oral communication. We'll entertain a motion to adopt the meeting agenda as presented unless a modification is requested. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Dunstford, a second by Councilmember Barnes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Council requests and ideas for discussion. Councilmember Lopez Ortega.
Well, I just want to say Happy New Year to everybody who's here. It's so good to see almost the whole town here, and this is, and this should be the way that it should be every single meeting, not when it's just about water, because whatever happens here in these meetings, it affects one way or another, affect all of us. Sometimes we take decisions here that later on, people say, why this is happening, and nobody told us, but everything happens, all the decisions happen here in this council meeting, and it's good to see, you know, a lot of people here. And I'd just like to say also that we are very lucky to live in this community, and we are very lucky comparing to other cities in California that they had worse problems than we do. So welcome, everybody, and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
And let's do this.
Councilmember Barnes?
Just one thing, plus I second everything that Iris said. We have just come through a very, very tough year. We've had droughts, we've had floods, and of course, a disastrous fire. One of the things that I would like to see worked on next year as relates to the fire is the reinstallation of the siren at the fire hall. There were a lot of people in town that didn't know what was going on. At least they'd have been woken up that night, that Sunday night, and maybe got a little more information a little quicker if that siren had gone off, so I'd like to see it come back. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Kraus?
Yes, I agree with the first two council members, with everything, including the siren, but this evening, I have a special guest here. My mom has been up over New Years, and her name is Dorothy Kraus, and she's sitting back there. Mom, would you stand up? She's 90 years old, and she still drives, but not in Calistoga. So, so thank you very much, Mom, and thank everybody for recognizing her.
She's not the one racing down Foothill?
No, I, no, she's not the one on Foothill. Yeah.
Vice Mayor Dunstford?
I have nothing to add except Happy New Year, glad to see everybody here.
Thank you. Couple items, Happy New Year again. The JPA date, as I mentioned, again, let your, regarding the fairgrounds and the future of the fairgrounds, if you feel strongly about that on either side of the fence, please let your county supervisor, make them known what your feelings are, not just our local supervisor, not just Diane Dillon. You are welcome to contact any county supervisor before January 30th. This has a big impact on the city in the future years. Also, on February 21st, which will be in our website, we'll have another community forum, and that'll be regarding ideas, concepts, follow-up concerns, and things we did well regarding the response to the fires, and I know the siren has been brought up multiple times, so we'll go for that as well. And then also, because this has been asked about quite a bit, we will do another community forum and roundtable discussion in March on the topic of, now that I've been cannabis. So as you know, it's now legal in the state of California as of yesterday, so we will, assuming people still want to talk about that, we'll bring that back for future discussions. With that said, city managers report.
The only thing I have tonight was, on Christmas Day, our recreation departments provided meals to quite a few people at the new Boys and Girls Club building. I was able to help out. Special thanks to folks like Jim Barnes, who donated pies, Silage donated hams. We had way more food for leftovers than could have possibly been eaten. But volunteers showed up in droves, they prepared 50-plus meals to take to people at their homes. We served probably 150 people there in the gym. It's a wonderful event, it was a lot of fun, and so if people haven't ever been to that community event, you know, come next year for Christmas. It's a fun event, it's usually after present opening, but it's just a good way to hang out with people, and there's always plenty of wine to go around, and we even sent people home with some bottles, so it was a good, it was a good event.
City manager, a slight correction on the pies. My wife and I donated 50% of the pies. Dick and Edie Engelhardt donated the other 50% of the pies.
How many of those did you eat?
There were 22 pies consumed.
All right, fair enough. And we want to thank our friends over at the Boys and Girls Club, because that is a joint use of their brand-new facility. For those of you that have not seen it yet, it's a pretty amazing place, and part of our arrangement with the Boys and Girls Club and the donation or the allowance of the use of our land is for joint use in community events like that, so that was the first big one, so well done there. There are no proclamations, presentations awarded this evening, so we'll move on to the consent calendar, and I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent calendar as presented unless someone needs an item pulled. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, we have a second by Councilmember Barnes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on, item number two, under public hearing. Receive presentation and recommendation from staff and consultant regarding the water and wastewater funds, their financial status, and options to address concerns. The recommended action this evening is to receive the presentation, discuss and provide direction for staff. Just a, as Dylan's going to make his way up, a couple things to keep in mind, I know you are all here for this topic versus the consent calendar item. Tonight's purpose, I know a lot of people got nervous about, you know, the hearing is January 2nd. We are held, to which Dylan will touch upon, a very strict protocol by the state of California under Proposition 218. Today starts the official public process. There was a year and a half, actually a year and four months worth of work that started before this, so the purpose of tonight, this council has stated earlier, we are not intending to make a final decision. What we are intending to do is to share information, share the facts and figures, which are always available in public record anytime you want them, but here we'll bring them together in one spot, share the situation. We'll offer options that have been discussed and presented over the last year and four months. We'll answer questions, most importantly. We'll listen to public input, and again, no decision needs to be made tonight. What I do want to clarify, as the council members would tell you, this is not a pleasant process for us or for you, but it is necessary. It's within the requirements of the fiduciary responsibility that we have as your elected representatives. We are also all rate payers up here, both as individual residents and some of us as businesses, so if it was a case of you thought we were sitting around one day bored with nothing else to do, and we said, let's raise some rates, that's not how it goes. Dylan will cover a very informative presentation, so please pay attention, he'll probably answer a lot of your questions that you're looking to ask to begin with. He will cover things that we're required to do by law, he'll also cover some consequences of actions that individuals and organizations have taken against the city, that those of us as rate payers have to bear the burden with or of under current legislation. So without further ado, I will present to you City Manager Feek.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can everybody hear me all right? All right, well first, let me just say that there is nothing that makes my butt pucker more than worried about a group of angry folks coming here to talk about water rates. Maybe jalapenos on my pizza, maybe wildfire, but I've been very nervous for the last couple weeks. So as many of you were planning your Christmas events, present openings, or holiday dinners, I was working on a presentation, I was studying notes, getting ready for this presentation of January 2nd, and, you know, for a lot of, a lot of the pent-up emotion, you know, when I showed up today and I hear people kind of laugh and play as we start the council meeting, it's, I just want to say how, how much I love being in Calistoga. I think that's what makes Calistoga unique and special, and, you know, for us, you know, I've been talking about water and wastewater rates with consultants, with staff, with two of our council members for well over a year. We started this process in November 2016, and so many of you feel like you're hearing it now for the first time, which is true. That's when we start mailing out notices as part of the process. And so I think it's good that we have this meeting, I'm glad you're here, I'm glad we get you, you know, up to date on information. There's going to be a lot here tonight. I've timed this presentation a few times, fair warning, it's about 40 minutes long, and I'm going to go as quickly as I can, but there's a lot of important things which I think are helpful for you to understand, they're certainly helpful for me to understand. This is the first time in my two years here that I have stood at the dais and actually presented something that I remember, except for the time when council approved my contract. I will happily turn this over to the retired city manager, Richard Spitler, if he so chooses. Being as he is not a taker, let me move right on through my presentation. One thing I want to do, again, I've tried to kind of settle the mood, I want to have a little bit of fun first. So here are five important secrets that one of our sewer plant operators knows about you here in Calistoga. First, you send massive clumps of grease down your drains. We call these slugs. These things stink, they're big, they block and they break sewer mains, and they're a pain in the butt to get out of our system, so stop flushing your grease down the drain. Second, we find lots of cool stuff you accidentally flushed down, so if we could collect all the rings, the necklaces, the furniture that you send down to our plant, we could probably subsidize these rates a little bit. So, you know, just be careful about what you send down the drain, especially medication. Do not flush your medication. If you think boron and antimony are bad for fish habitat, try Oxycontin, Percocet, and, you know, any kind of morphine, any of that stuff. We work in, around, and with your waste every day. We all know what flushes down the toilet, but city crews are constantly working on that every day. We give them a whole variety of shots when they start work here, just to make sure that when something gets in their face, gets in their hair, gets in their mouth, they're ready, they're, they're healthy and safe. So be thankful for those wastewater operators. Lastly, we can never shut down, no matter what, so just like preserving fire or light safety during a wildfire, one of the most important things the city did during the Tubbs fire is we made sure that that wastewater treatment plant was always operating. We had generators, we had staff, we were always there 24/7, even today, 24/7 operation. Our number one is your number two. Never forget that. One of the things, one of the things that I like to do is I like to create music playlists for when, for, you know, significant times in my life. So again, as I've been sweating bullets for a couple weeks, January 2nd, 2018, public hearing, oh my gosh, I put together a music playlist. You can actually find these songs on my phone. So here's Dylan's January 2nd music playlist. First, "We Came to Fight" by The Angry Briots. I gotta laugh, that's good. I'm glad you're all mellow, I'm just having fun here, okay? "Straight Out the Sewer" by Daz FX, really, it's a song on there. "Heads Will Roll" by The Yeah, Yeah, Yeahs. Next, "Even Flow" by Pearl Jam, that was my favorite. "Drink the Water" by Jack Johnson, and "Like a Prayer" by Madonna. "It's the End of the World as We Know It" by R.E.M., and lastly, "Story of My Life" by Social Distortion. I started, I started my career in local government 10 years ago this month, and the very first project that the city manager gave me, water rates. And so in 10 years' time, water and wastewater rates have always been something that I care about, that I was involved in, and that I did, and it's just constantly a discussion. It's not my favorite part of the job, but just like a lot of parts of my job, I'm passionate about what I do, I love what I do, and I'm grateful to be here tonight presenting to you. The agenda, I'll go over the presentation as quickly as I can, I want to hit very important points, and the most important thing that we do tonight is, as many of you received a notice, we're actually holding a public hearing. It's an important part of the process. We hold the public hearing tonight, and at the end, I'll explain what council decisions can be at the end of this hearing. Certainly, I expect them to have discussion after hearing from, from you, some of your, your ideas, your concepts, your concerns, and then providing direction to staff, and certainly there will be staff follow-up. But I, I think it would be, it would, it would be a detriment if we didn't start by going back and talking a little bit about some of the past things that have happened to Calistoga, which have led us to where we're at today. So one of the most important things that I'll start with is water rights litigation. You know, that's, it's gone on, you know, for years, but especially in 2009, when the city had to defend water rights, City versus Reynolds has cost the city over $1.6 million. That money has come fully out of the general fund, that is more than all five years of these rate increases combined in water and sewer. It's expensive. We haven't charged a penny of staff time to that $1.6 million. That's been in attorney's fees, legal fees, litigation costs. It's very expensive to defend our water rights. We get water from two sources. 30% comes from Kimball Reservoir, which is what we're defending, and 66% to 70% comes from the North Bay Aqueduct, which is water that comes from the city of Napa. I'll talk a little bit later about how that water, that 60% of our water supply, is going up 9%, it represents the largest dollar item on our budget and the most significant cost increase. 2010, we had a water wastewater rate study. That study developed several what I'd call guiding principles that we've used, and we've used in years past, we used again this year to help guide council members, staff, and our consultants as we move forward with this. Things like cover the cost, the true cost of running our utilities, how do we achieve our minimum debt coverage, how do we provide funding for critical projects, how do we spread the rate increases over five years, and how do we make sure that people are paying their fair share as well as simplifying rates? 2011, California declared a drought started, and ever since, we've had a drought. Well, a drought is actually really good for water conservation, it is horrible for water revenues. One of the problems that the city has had over the last several years is we've had annual deficits in our water and wastewater enterprises. In the water enterprise alone, about $600,000 a year deficit in the last four years is our average. So the city has used money from the general fund, the city has used its fund balance to help cover that cost, but we've been running annual deficits. It's not a problem of mismanagement, it's just simply a problem of we have 1,600 customers, and we have a very large and expensive operation to run, and it's very costly, and when we have to spend money to do certain improvements, we have to spread that cost across a very small group of people. 2012 and 13, two very important referendum. The number one question I hear from folks is, we thought that when we approved these two projects, that our rates increases would go away, or they would stabilize, or why aren't they paying their fair share? The next slide, you're going to see talks about what they've paid and what they will pay in the future. 2013, again, an additional rate study update. 2014 and 18, that original litigation, that Reynolds and City of Calistoga litigation, there's a new name on it now, it's a second lawsuit. It's called O'Gorman versus City of Calistoga, arguing essentially the same points. The city's case has been, this is the same lawsuit under a different name. We don't believe it changes anything, and we're spending money to litigate. And a couple slides, I'll show you the judge's decision, judge awards in our favor, and then that litigation gets appealed to a higher court. We're back in court litigating again. Lots of costly litigation, all costs borne by the general fund. 2014, state regulatory agency issues a cease and desist order, that the City of Calistoga and our wastewater treatment plant operations has to perform certain activities. You're discharging too much substance, too much chemical, too much byproduct into the Napa River, and you have to change certain things. A significant capital cost that we'll talk about later is all related to the cease and desist order. It was amended in 2016, so we call it the 2016 cease and desist order, but the, the rate increase on the wastewater side, you can attribute to these projects, which the state is telling us you have to do these. 2015, California courts ruled that tiered rates have to be cost justified. What this means is the City of Calistoga used to have four rates, and if you used this much water, here's how much you paid for your water, if you used a little bit more, you paid more, and so on. We had four of those, of those tiers, and the state said, you can't do that. You have to determine what the actual cost is to produce the water, and that's what you have to charge. So what we used before, what many cities used before as a disincentive to use a lot of water, now the courts have said you can't do it. You have to be able to determine what the cost is to produce a gallon of water, and then charge for that gallon of water and that gallon of water only. And then I think the last point that I just would make out is, even though the two resorts have paid a lot of money in development impact fees, they still haven't paid a single penny in what I'd call rate-based revenue. This is your monthly bill, that's rate-based revenue, which pays our operations moving forward. Speaking of those two projects, when I look at, in city council, I, and actually, anyone who got a published presentation, we, we published these a little bit earlier, one of the numbers that was left out, which is really, it's a big number, Calistoga Hills, we entered into a development agreement with Calistoga Hills. They paid a water connection fee of $1.1 million. In addition, they performed a In addition, they performed a significant amount of work which benefited the public at large. They installed a lower Washington sewer trunk main, estimated cost of $4.4 million. And they also paid for a Pine Street lift station, the city had a portion, they had a portion of cost, and they financed it over three years at 0% interest loan. So the city determined the value of what I'd call in-kind improvements or actual cash contributions of $6.5 million. Silver Rose has paid $1.2 million in water connection fees and $3.9 million in wastewater connection fees, total of $5.2 million. The reason there's an asterisk here is the state law allows us to defer payment of connection fees for residential homes up until the time a certificate of occupancy is issued. So for the 20 homes on kind of the east end of the property, they haven't paid fees on that yet, and they will once we issue certificates of occupancy. There'll be a large influx of cash, just under $700,000. I only showed these two projects and their development-related fees because that's what people ask about, but no one gets a free shot here in the city of Calistoga. Let me give you a couple of examples. 611 Washington, the senior apartments down here, the city, we own the land, we lease it to a partner to build senior housing. We charged them $1.1 million in water and sewer connection fees. Boys and Girls Club, beautiful new building built on our land, and we're partnering with them, but we charged them $420,000 in water and wastewater connection fees. We have a small business who just recently wanted to expand his business, and he had to pay an additional $40,000 in water and wastewater connection fees. And in case you didn't know, if you want to build a new single-family home, $40,000 is your price tag just to get the water and wastewater connection fees. So I point that out because as far as new development goes, no one gets a free pass in Calistoga. We collect those dollars so we can invest in our infrastructure, so existing rate payers like yourselves don't have to bear those costs. Once these two projects alone are up and running, which Calistoga Hills is more likely fiscal year 2020, Silver Rose, next year, it will equal about $973,000 a year to where it increases over time to $1.1 million. So that annual rate-based revenue, the stabilization that this council talked about so many times years ago, the rates will stabilize, we're not promising they're going to go down, we're not promising you're never going to have rate increases again, but they'll stabilize. $1.1 million on just two projects alone is a huge chunk of money for these enterprise systems. Let me, if you don't mind, let me work through the presentation.
Save questions till after.
Yeah, and then we'll do questions at the end. So save your question, that's a great question. I just want to point this out again, you know, here's some of the ways that we've got around, and we've addressed some of these issues of how do we fund essential water and wastewater services in Calistoga? And it's really been reliance on the general fund. It's not a good city management practice, but it's what we had to do at the time. We didn't have excess revenues in the water and wastewater fund. We were in a drought, the development hadn't occurred yet. $1.6 million in litigation costs, all borne by the general fund. We did a couple loans to the sewer fund, $659,000. We budgeted some transfers into the water fund, $238,000. To date, 100% of our pension costs come out of the general fund. We split some of our salaries, so an employee like myself, the public works director, who sometimes work on water projects, sometimes work on general fund projects, we pay a portion of salaries across these different funds to kind of share the hurt, if you will. And then we even hold positions vacant. We hold them vacant, we don't fill them, we work our staff a little bit more, but it allows us to not have to pay salary, pension, healthcare, those things, to kind of try and keep costs down. So that's just, I guess I'd call, general fund contributions to our water and wastewater enterprise system that we've been doing for years past. There is an impact, you know, if you add all these numbers up, you know, easily $2.5 million plus. So $2.5 million could go towards general fund purposes, whether that's roads, parks, whatever. Sharpstein, we talk about this building here, we can improve this building, there's a whole host of, it's just an opportunity cost, if you're spending it here, you can spend it there. And then just a little bit of language that I wanted to show you related to litigation in the O'Gorman versus Calistoga. So again, really the context, it alleged Ms. O'Gorman inherited exclusive right to store, sell, divert water from Kimball, very similar to previous litigation. Claims the city's appropriation of water constituted a taking of her water rights, and in January of 2017, Judge Stone rejected all the claims, found there's no property interest, and then last line, currently appealing. So similar situation, similar circumstance, we're still litigating here now, a year later, getting ready to go into appeals court. Moving right into water rate study. Some of the important things that we've asked the consultant to prepare, it's not, you know, rates are pretty complicated, and there's good, what I'd call, principles of how you do rate setting. Some of the things we want to make sure and avoid and stay out of are things like litigation. So this idea of this tiered rate, if the state law says we can't do it, get rid of it. We don't want to be doing something that's illegal, we don't want to be challenging it, we don't want to be litigating it, we certainly don't want to have to be issuing refunds to people, so just get rid of that tiered rate. That will have an impact on users, especially if you have been, you know, I'll call you a conservator of water. If you've been paying this much, you know, your rate is going to go up a little bit on a usage basis. If you've been the guy who's using 500 gallons of water, the cost per gallon to use 500 is going to be the same as the cost to use six, if that makes sense. And the reason why we have to do that is because the state said we have to. We don't have a choice. And so from the city's perspective, we've tried to be a good steward, we've tried to encourage conservation, and we had this tiered rate structure which kind of helped us do that. Now state law says, can't do that anymore, you got to get rid of that. One of the other items that we've added, that I've asked them to add, is a new rate structure that's structured more on fixed costs versus variable costs. So for example, every year, I know I have to make improvements to my wastewater and my water systems. I got to replace pipe, I got to replace valves. I know that I'm going to have staff costs, I know I'm going to have debt, that's existing debt, and I can see how much I'm going to have to pay for the next 20 years. So those are what I call our fixed costs. And then you have these variable costs, which are, you know, the cost to treat water, if you produce more water, and we have to treat more water, that's what you try and build into your variable cost rate. Currently, our fixed rate is 32%, and I've asked them to increase that to 40%. And our variable rate is 68%, which will drop down to 60. So there's a little bit of an adjustment that's done, so that more of the costs will be borne on a fixed rate model than on the variable. Debt service coverage, or debt coverage ratio, is something I'm going to spend a little bit of time talking about later, but essentially, prior to this city council, prior to this staff, and prior to many people, maybe even who live here now, there were decisions made years ago about issuing debt to pay for improvements. When we issued debt, we made a promise to bondholders that we would always have an amount of money set aside over here in case we had a drought, in case we had a bad year of collecting revenues, that we could pay off those bonds that people purchased. We have not been meeting debt coverage ratios in our water funds since 2008. On the wastewater side, I don't know when the last time we met wastewater debt coverage ratio was, but there's implications if we don't have money set aside for that. Worst-case scenario, a bondholder could call and say, pay off your bond, you've defaulted on your bond. I don't know that it's that simple, but technically speaking, we've made a promise we have to comply. It does impact us in our ability to get more free money, it certainly has disallowed me from refinancing the debt. If I have debt at an interest rate of 5%, which is high, that was issued back in 2004, I cannot right now go reissue it and get a new interest rate, because I'm not, I don't have enough revenue meeting my debt coverage ratio, I don't have enough new revenue coming This slide is incredibly hard to read even for me, so I do apologize. I do want to mention that we present it, we prepared many presentations we can send people home with. Also, we're going to put these on the city website after tonight, so anyone who wants to go see this presentation online, and I'll be here, I'll, you know, I'll be the last one here at the building tonight, so if anyone has a particular question about them, come find me. This slide, the only reason I show you this one is operating revenues and expenses only. And as I said in the beginning, if you were to look back on the last four years, you'd see that we've had a deficit of $600-plus thousand for the last four years. What we're building in with these new rates and showing the annual contributions of the two resort projects show that in the first year, our deficit drops down significantly, and in these out years, when the resorts come online, we start to see this increase where we actually have a surplus in our water fund. This also allows us to fund all of our needed capital improvement projects and meet our debt coverage ratio. So that's what the consultants look at, is show me a model, show me a presentation which satisfies all these requirements, meeting your debt coverage, doing your projects, you're paying for your expenses, so on, excuse me, so on and so forth. When I look at total revenues and expenses, this adds in all those development impact fees, if there's interest earnings, you know, sometimes we might have surplus revenue, surplus property, you know, it's all these other things that aren't just annual operating revenues. And you can see our fund balance as of fiscal year 2016, it's just under a million, and you can see these years where, you know, the fund balance builds up because of development impact revenue, and then it kind of slowly stabilizes at about $2.5 million. And the reason we try and keep it right here at this number, especially the 2.4 at the end of this period, is so we also meet our debt coverage ratio, which at the end of this five-year window, I have, it's, the way you calculate debt coverage ratio is, one and a quarter of your annual debt is set aside. So if my debt, if I pay $100 a year, I've got 125 bucks just carved out in the event I needed it. What our enterprise funds essentially are, is they're utility systems, they're utility operations, and it's different than the general fund, because a general fund is providing services. We have police officers, firefighters, we have planning and building officials, management staff. These enterprise funds are very different. Sure, we have staff, but we're maintaining infrastructure, we're providing clean and safe drinking water and wastewater to a town. So our costs are going to be very different looking, they're not nearly as much payroll and more debt, more capital projects, and more your contract services for sludge removal and, you know, permitting costs, that kind of thing. When you look at our town, 80% of our water infrastructure, which is 50 miles of water main, 80% of that is under 50 years old. The most important statistic for me is, at the end of this five-year window, we have 20% that's above 50, 50% of our water infrastructure will be above 50 years old. So our pipe is getting old, and it's getting to that point where it reaches what we call its useful life. And after 50 years is when we're going to start to see more problems maintaining the pipe. It's already hard to shut off water main valves in places like Cedar Street, Myrtle Street. You know, sometimes when we have to shut off some valves to do things like a Berry Street Bridge project, we have to go back four or five blocks, because these valves don't work, they're all an 80-year-old pipe. So it gets really complicated if you're not maintaining and upgrading your infrastructure. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on our capital project list, a couple of things I want to point out are, one, our staff has done a fantastic job of using what we call OPM, other people's money. And Mike Kern, I'm not sure where Mike went, he might be standing, oh, he's back there in the corner. Mike has done a fantastic job. Every chance we get, we try and get federal dollars, state dollars, try and get someone else to pay for the projects that we have to do, because it means savings for you, the resident, the rate payer. We currently have $3.6 million in known grant monies, which will pay for the phage tank project and, well, portions of phage and portions of the Kimball intake project. This is what the proposed rate structure is, you know, based on the different meter you might have, here's what your monthly charge would be, and here's the cost per 100 cubic feet of usage. Again, no more four tiers, just one tier. When you do all the math, in 100 cubic feet of water, there's about, in one cubic foot of water, there's about 7.48 gallons per cubic foot. 100 equals 748 gallons, divided by $7.09, that means .009 cents is what that gallon of water costs someone using city of Calistoga water. It's still less than a penny to use water, but when you buy in bulk, it adds up quick. And I think that's, you know, I've always said, the two indicators of how people are feeling how they're doing are, one, what the pumps, what the sign says at the gas pump, and two, what their water bill says. I mean, you know, it's, when you buy a lot of water, you feel it. And our debt, I'm going to breeze through these really quickly, we have $600,000 in annual debt service, those are on three debt issuances, we're not meeting our minimum debt coverage, and as I've said before, I've tried no less than five times to try and refinance that existing debt. One of the first things that I'll do when we approve whatever the rate increases are, is I'm going to my financial advisor, and I'm going to work on refinancing that debt, because if I can get savings out of there, it's savings on paper, and it results in savings to you. And we could have an opportunity to do that on both water and wastewater. The first year of rate increase, of a 15% rate increase, represents $180,000 in new revenue. As I mentioned earlier, the city of Napa has already approved three years of 9% increases on their water. So we've been put on notice that our bill is going up 9% year one, 9% again, 9% again. And when we pay a little over $1 million a year, it's about a $100,000 cost for us to buy their water. So it eats up a lot of that new revenue that we're proposing. We've also budgeted a 4% increase in our expenses to run all of our expenses in the system. When you do the simple math, we're already spending more than we're anticipating in new revenue, and that's where those development impact fee revenues really are important. They help us pay for new development, they help us pay for existing projects. In addition, I foresee at least a window of time where we're going to have to continue to keep a position vacant, we're going to have to find other ways to save money refinancing, just to make sure that we're staying within how much revenue we have. I put this slide together, and this is just anecdotal, it doesn't really mean anything other than, a lot of people say, why don't the resorts pay for this increase, or why don't the restaurants pay for this increase? And it's really important that as a city, you know, we try to determine what the true cost is, who's receiving that service, and we apply that cost to that user. And the reason I put this slide up is I just had the idea of, well, how much are people using, and how much revenue do we collect from them, and are the percentages of the total comparable? So single-family residential inside the city, they use about 36% of our water, it's just easy, easy numbers, and they pay for about 39% of the actual revenue we collect. So it's at least within a certain, it's close. If single-family residential was using 20% of the water but paying for 80% of the cost, it'd have been a red flag for me. That's a difference, that's a fundamental unsustainable model. And so when I look at these numbers, you know, there's nothing that concerns me that, you know, I guess I'd say, persons or a user type is getting a free ride. I won't spend a lot of time here, other than to say, you know, we've covered all these issues, these continue to be the issues and challenges that we have. The only items that I'd really add are, we currently have what we call a low-income discount program. So if anyone is enrolled on the, it's the PG&E care program, where you get 20% off your bill, you can show us that, and you can get the same discount here on the city's water system. A lot of people don't know that, so come on in, sign you up. It's easy to do, and we do it here at the city, so, you know, that's a simple thing. And one of the items I'm going to have tonight talk about, we haven't changed that in a long time, and maybe that's something we want to look at. And then I think a project that I just point out, which to me is helpful, is we have really old meters that are called manual read meters. So every other month, that's why you get your billing, is every other month, we did it as a kind of a cost savings measure, staff goes out and manually reads meters, and they write it down on paper, we come back to city hall, we prepare bills, it's cumbersome, it takes a lot of time, a lot of staff. What should be happening is we have a radio meter or an internet-based meter, and, you know, a truck drives around with a nodule that's collecting data as it runs, it feeds it right back to city hall, you know, depending on how you set that up, we could be alerting people if we noticed a water leak right there on the same day. We could be billing monthly, we can bill whenever you want, we could create some really cool products, I mean, there's a lot of opportunity there, and it starts with getting rid of these old manual read meters, which have been in place for a long time, and many of them are already 25, 30 years old or older. I hear all the time that we have the highest rates in the state of California, the highest rates in the country, that it's the worst water quality here, you know, when we do the comparison, St. Helena, if anyone remembers when St. Helena first approved or proposed their rates, they were like up here, above the exit sign. And, you know, they went through the process, got a lot of public input, and they... they, they, they settled down on a number, which was much more palatable, but still significantly higher than everyone else. So even our closest city partner has rates higher than us, and we only really looked at this regional area. We didn't look at San Francisco metro area. I have a really good friend, I talk water rates with him all the time down in LA County, single-family residential water bill is $1,200 there. So it's, it, it is, it, you know, a lot of people think that it is the worst here, and I, and I think that's just a misconception. I'm not saying, you know, I like $200 water bills, I'm not saying that, I'm, I'm just trying to point out, when we look at some of this factual information on how we really do compare to our neighbors, this is it. Here's our current rate, and when we propose the new increases, it'll move us here above Yountville and right below St. Helena. You'll see that many of these other agencies, part of the reason they're so, they're much cheaper is they're, they have much higher population bases, higher commercial bases, where they're selling more water, providing more water, and they can spread those costs out amongst many other partners. And the Sly City manager, or town manager that works in Yountville, he just told me the other day that they're proposing a 7% rate increase as soon as we're done with ours. So, so they're, they're going to, they're going to jump right back over us, and then same thing on the wastewater side. I'm going to move through wastewater a little bit quicker, so everybody, thank you for being patient, I appreciate it. Similar slides on total revenues and expenses, you can see our fund balance, how it, it, it stays kind of, it increases quite a bit, part of that is to pay for these mandated projects that are required to comply with under the cease and desist order, and it just slowly kind of tapers down to about $1.4 million, which does meet our debt coverage ratio. So similar issues with water, and we're applying the same process to our wastewater side. As you see here, we still have a, a high deficit this year. The reason that we have the deficit is, I, I believe I said this earlier, the cease and desist order is very dependent on complying with many measures by the end of calendar year 2019. So when we budget, we plan for these projects, we know that we've got to do them by the end of 2019. So that's why we've got a lot of, you know, steep rate increases, but also expensive projects planned for this, this current fiscal year and this next fiscal year to comply. Similar situation in the City of Calistoga, about 30% of our existing sewer infrastructure is already 50 years old or older. We have less to maintain, about 18 miles, but it's in rough shape. If anyone ever wonders why we haven't paved Third Street, Fourth Street, Fifth Street yet, the sewer, sewer is, it's figuratively and literally, it's crap. And so why, why would we come in and put in a brand-new road, only to put it on top of 75, 80, 85-year-old infrastructure? Because we'll be right back there tearing up the road here soon. So that's why we haven't replaced those roads yet. The, the only thing I really want to point out on the capital projects, you can look at all of these, a lot of good projects there. The Pine Street Lift Station is the last payment we make to Calistoga Hills as part of that agreement we made, but when you go down the list and you start just checking off these items, they're related to cease and desist order. So Riverside Pond Project, you know, that's, that's a project, we have to reduce the amount of, of groundwater that infiltrates from those ponds into the Napa River, we have to. So that's where you see that project built in there, $4 million project. Geothermal meters, meters, part of a SPA settlement agreement from years ago. In addition, we have to reduce geothermal discharge into the Napa River, so it's, it's also part of cease and desist order. THM compliance, which is a disinfection byproduct, when we train and clean the water, there's byproducts, we got to, you know, do work there, but you can just go down the list and see these items that are all related to that, that a regulatory agency is telling City of Calistoga, thou shalt do. Similar to water, we have about just under $700,000 in annual debt, we're not meeting our minimum debt coverage requirement. Again, first priority for me, whatever the new rate increases are, I'm refinancing the debt. I need a better rate, as it results in savings for you. And once I have new rates that have been adopted, I can use that in my presentation, my request for refinancing. The new revenue, as I said, pays for $7 million worth of projects that are on that list, and I'll just kind of, I'm just going to shoot over this, because we already talked about it. Same chart, usage versus total revenue. The only thing I really want to point out here and kind of explain is, when you look at restaurants, you can see that their usage, about 5%, but their actual revenue is about 10%. And, you know, that's not a, that's not a big difference, but the reason I point that out is there are several user types who, I guess they require different kinds of treatment. So for example, restaurants, they put something different in the wastewater system than a residential home does. So we bill them appropriately for that, we have a surcharge. In addition, there are geothermal dischargers. So someone who's discharging geothermal water into the wastewater system, they also pay a surcharge. And it's important that they do that, and because we can break that out, we can make them pay for it, so a single-family residential homeowner, a mobile home park owner, doesn't even have to touch that cost. When we mailed the notices for the sewer increases, we mailed what I'd call option one. Option one assumed that we would not get this FEMA grant money, which is about $3 million, to do this pond lining project. Worst-case scenario, FEMA says no, and you still have to do it, and now we got to come up with money to do it ourselves. Those rate increases help us fund that project, we can fund it on our, on our own. If we did get grant funding, significantly less in rate increases, although it's still a steep increase in the first year, but it's, it's less over time. The project would be funded by FEMA, we wouldn't have as steep of increases in years out. And one thing I'd point out about Proposition 218 is, when we notice those rates, those are the maximum rates allowable. So the city council, you can always scale those rates back, you can always cancel those, those rate increases, which I will say is one year, these 10 years I've been doing this, there was one year we actually canceled the rate increases, and part of that had to do with refinancing debt. A really hard and fuzzy slide to see, again, I apologize, it looks much better on my presentation screen, but, you know, if you're, you know, if you're a single-family home, if you're a brewery wine or whatever it is, you can go down the list and you can see what your rates will be here. Make sure there's presentation slides, so you can, you can have that information. On the wastewater side, you can see current rate right here, Calistoga, it's, for residential customers, it's all a fixed charge, there's no variable rate, part of that's because how we do the metering, but it's fixed, and it, and it increases to right here. So we don't really move up significantly, City of Sonoma, St. Helena, Healdsburg are all still higher than us, and as I said earlier, Yountville, which is right here at the very bottom, they're proposing a 12% rate increase. So they're going to be moving somewhere much closer to us, and so Yountville will be close, St. Helena will still be greater. To talk a little bit about the process, I'm going to breeze through these. Prop 218 was essentially, you know, an amendment to the state constitution, it provided a procedure for property owners to object to proposed rate increases before any rate can be adopted. The way it starts, if you remember back in November 7th, we, the consultant, Bartle Wells Associates, provided a presentation to council, we went over all the information, we talked about a few discussion points, and then we actually proceeded and mailed the notices to residents. You have to wait 45 days, a minimum 45 days, and then you must hold a public hearing. And once you hold the public hearing, you can continue a public hearing, you can close a public hearing, you can, you know, you can, you have to have that public hearing. What happens after that public hearing is really dependent on a couple of things. So during the public hearing, we invite public comment, so we appreciate the people who showed up, who have speaker cards. Being as I've taken most of the time, you know, if you feel like, if you feel like you want to take your full three minutes, if you feel like you want to keep it down to two minutes, if you want to say, yeah, what he said, you know, we, we, we get it, but let us know what the impacts are, you know, we, we understand, we hear you, and if you have ideas, let us know what they are. Once we're done with those public comments, one of the things that the city clerk does, and many of you are aware of this, is parcel owners, the, the way Prop 218 is written, a parcel owner that's impacted by these proposed rate increases, they can actually sign a petition, and if the city receives 50%, a simple majority, 50% plus one of protests, then the city may not, cannot move forward with those rate increases. Doesn't mean it has to, but it just means that if you collect 50% plus one protests of affected parcel owners by the law, you cannot move forward with that. And again, if 50% or less submit the written protests, we verify all of them, you may still go forward with the rates. But you can also receive input from non-parcel owners, you can hear input from many people here who aren't a parcel owner, who, who might not be able to write a protest, who have a thought or a concern or something they want to share. But you can also do other things. So we've already talked about our community forum scheduled for January 17th, much less formal than this, we might have to buy a few more chairs, but that's a great way for people to share thoughts and ideas, and it's been a successful thing for us in the past. Some things that I put up here, this is just, this is my, you know, contribution, some food for thought. One of the things that I heard from a, from one of the community group I met with was, could you increase your low-income assistance program? So at least the people who financially can't afford the steep increases could get some extra help to, to pay the cost. So that's a great idea. It's really only between $10,000 and $15,000 a year that we currently pay, and so if council wanted to increase 20% subsidy to 30% or even 40%, it's not a big cost item, but it might help the most vulnerable people impacted by the rates, so something to consider. We could continue to use the general fund as an offset. So when you look at the, the basic math, about 1% of new revenue is equal to about $12,000 in both water and sewer fund. So if we want to continue using the general fund as a, to supplement the, the enterprise funds, it's an option. Council, you have 100% prerogative and ability to do that, and I just pointed out that, just recognize that, you know, there's an opportunity cost, so other projects or services could be impacted, might have to hold off on one or two things, but that's your decision, your discretion to make. You could get into rebate programs. So do you, if you refinance debt, for example, and you wanted to give a rebate, you want to do a monthly, you want to do an annually, it all comes down to how you process it, but as a city council, as a governing body, you can do that. If we received a FEMA grant, and hey, we received a grant, and let's reduce rates, you can do that too. Under Prop 218, what was noticed and sent out is the maximum rate allowed. And then the other point that I just want to make is, even in this five-year window, whether it's this year, next year, or any time, you can always cancel a rate increase. Prop 218 does nothing to inhibit you from canceling a rate increase, but it's going through the process, public hearing, all that, you have to establish your maximum rates. My mouth is dry, my hands are sweaty, people are tired, I want to thank you all very much for your patience. And, and the, and the one thing I'd say is, you know, just to the city council, you know, think about if you were sitting up here, having to, you know, get dumped all this information from staff, from consultants, to have to walk down the street and see your neighbors like, hey man, what the heck you doing to my water rates? You know, council get bombarded all the time, you know, so I just, I just want to say, you know, this is, this is, part of this is ensuring I have a job here for a long time. I love working for this council. In all seriousness, no, they have a hard job, and so I appreciate the respect, the applause, you being here tonight, and if there's ever anything I can do, questions I can answer, help I can provide, I'm always here at City Hall. So with that, council, I'll return to my seat and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
One quick question. How much new revenue are we expecting from the wastewater increase? You said it was 180,000 for water, how much is it for wastewater, do you know offhand?
It's approximately the same.
Approximately the same? Okay, thank you.
All right, Dylan, thank you very much. Council members, questions? Or you can reserve your questions till after the public comment. All right, so how this works, if this is your first city council meeting, you will have a maximum of three minutes. On other topics, we sometimes let you go over. Tonight, unfortunately, and I'm not, I'll apologize in advance, I'm not going to be rude, but I'll give you a 30-second warning, and then we will stop you at three minutes. That's right. If somebody ahead of you has made the point that you were going to make, please don't feel compelled to have to reiterate that point, unless you so choose. And this is a, an opportunity for you to give ideas, ask questions, or make comments. And the other thing, it is a city council meeting, it is not a high school pep rally, so let's not jeer, cheer, and all of that fun stuff. And again, as I said at the beginning of this, this is not a pleasant task for any city, this is not a pleasant task for a city council in a small community, because we know all of you, you know us, we're paying these rates as well. But second only to public health and safety, the fiduciary responsibility of an elected body is the utmost, and it is our fiduciary responsibility, on behalf of this community and this city, to make sure that we are getting the city's business done. And as Dylan mentioned, we have some options, options all have consequences. One of those options, just so we're clear, absolutely is not to do absolutely nothing, because at the end of the day, these costs are going up, we are in some cases being forced to incur some of these costs, and we must do that. And, you know, the unpleasantness of litigation, and I could go on for years about the court system and how that can continue to keep happening, we could go on about the cease and desist order and the timing of it, but that is the reality in which we face. So with that said, I will start the public comment. I will start with the speaker cards, and then when I finish the speaker cards, if there's anyone else wishing to address the council on this topic, please make yourself known at that point. The first speaker card I have is Mr. Braun. Marvin, you back there? And if I call your name and your question's already been answered, you can say, I'm And just a reminder, please be sure to speak into the microphone, because we do have people at home watching. Yep, behind Mr. Braun is going to be Mr. Croman, behind Mr. Croman will be Mr. Nastari, so get yourself lined up. Mr. Braun, please share with us your name and address, should you so choose.
Marvin Braun, 21 Rock Rose Lane. Obviously, there's a lot to be said about this issue, so I'll try to make this as simple and brief as I can. Although I would like to advocate for all of Calistoga citizens concerning the proposed water rate increase, I will confine myself to our seniors, particularly those especially vulnerable seniors, including myself, living in our mobile home parks. First of all, I would like to mention the annual rent control, space rent increases in the parks. According to Donald Davis, an attorney for the firm that acts as the city's attorney, over 50% of the allowed annual space rent increases increase park owner profits, rather than simply allowing for inflation, as they are supposed to do. Those annual consumer price increases are also, on average, over the past 25 years, 20% higher than the social security increases received by the 19% of park residents who live on social security alone. So you can see that these seniors are being financially squeezed year by year by the These water rate increases, unless you can do, help us out in some way, will impact us even great, even more. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Croman. After Mr. Croman will be Mr. Nastari, after that will be Mr. Spittler.
Larry Croman, 19 Rock Rose Lane. I also represent Calistoga Affordable Housing and the Senior Parks Coalition. I'd like to make just three basic points. One is, we have reviewed, several of the organizations have reviewed the, the increase as it relates to the senior parks. I'm not sure that the rate increases are going to greatly impact the seniors and the parks. What has impacted is, over the years, as Marvin has mentioned, the increases that have come along have squeezed at least 20% of our, our seniors who live only on social security to the point where they have no extra money to give. The other point is that I, I noticed that park owners, park homeowners are not eligible to be part of the protest, and we did some investigation on that ruling, and we believe that the city has an error in doing that. We, as senior park homeowners, do receive a bill from the county for parcel tax. It is based upon the value of our buildings. We do not own the land, but I don't think that the law says you have to be landowner. I think it says property. So we'd like to have the council to reconsider that, when a third of your population are not eligible to participate in the protest process. The other part is, it was also mentioned that, that the, the seniors are able to take part in the care program. I'm not sure that's accurate. I, I was part of the, the rate study in 2010, and I know that was voted, and I'm sure the city may be calculating that in their rates to the parks, but the parks get a single bill. What they bill to the seniors is different, and we, we are just asking that some review be done to see what is the accuracy of this discount, because I'm one of those that is on the care discount, because I'm one of those that is on the care program. I have never seen a discount on my bill. I do see it on the electrical part, but I've never seen it on the water part. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just to clarify Mr. Croman's comment, under Prop 218, the legislation, you're only counted as a voter, if you will, if you're the actual meter owner. It has nothing to do with the property you live on, et cetera. And that's where, using the mobile home parks as an example, while you have a couple of hundred in a particular park, a couple hundred homes, there's one meter there. And that's the challenge that Prop 218 creates. Please, city manager.
I just want to clarify, Mr. Mayor, the way you look at it is more like, one parcel equals one vote, if you will, for counting the protest. The meters, if the city, the meters get really complicated, because one parcel might have 12 meters, might have 20 meters. There's no limit to how many meters actually go, so we're not actually counting the meters. The mobile home parks, the way they work is, you might have one large parcel, you might have 160 tenants in 160 separate mobile homes. You might have one master meter, and the city provides water to a mobile home property owner, that's one large parcel, they pay the bill. Our contractual relationship is with that one property owner. And then they divvy that bill out to all the different individuals. It could be the same with mobile home parks, with multifamily housing. So you think of it in terms of one parcel equals one protest, if you will.
Unless you're a parcel without a meter, you get no vote in the Prop 218.
And so, Dylan, for clarification, then, the park owner who pays the bill would not qualify for the discount, is that correct?
The way that the care program works, and I actually met with the senior home park coalition last week, the way that the care program works is, we get a list from mobile home park owners that say, these are the people who qualify for the program. They provide us a list, we put that into their bill, and then we send them the bill. But after hearing some of the concerns expressed from Larry, what I want to make sure that we are doing is, I'll call it the trust-but-verify method, just to make sure that the mobile home park owners, once they've told us to qualify, and we've calculated the bill and sent it back to them, we want to make sure that they're getting it to the tenant. I can't speak to whether they are or are not, I don't know that, but we will verify that. Because it was brought up as a concern, it would be our concern, too.
Mr. Nastari, Mr. Spittler next, and then David Moon Wainwright.
Yeah, my name is Michael Nastari, I live at 1407 Washington Street. And just a few things, what really stuck out with me during your presentation, Dylan, was the spa and resorts use 28% of the water, and that's the highest percentage of all the other entities and residents and so on. I was just wondering, maybe some of the tax occupancy, tax revenue could be diverted, because they do have the highest percentage of usage? Maybe it could be diverted over that way to make up for their excessive uses, as I see. It's after the fact, I mean, Calistoga Hills and Silver Rose are there, but I just wonder about planning and foresight. I mean, 2011 was the beginning of this drought, and I understand this year is going to be another dry year. And once these resorts are built and these people start coming in, okay, you have some of the new infrastructure, get them set up, but they're still utilizing our old infrastructure, you know? Because you can't create more water. I just think that, what I'm concerned about, and I don't want to go off course, but the, like, Roman Spa, that was supposedly, they were going to build a larger facility, because the fires are, in spite of them, we haven't had a meeting about that yet. I understand the old Glider Port, there's going to be a huge complex, I mean, are these city managers thinking about how many more people? I know tourism is the biggest industry, but can this town support all of that? This new construction without foresight of future of less water, you know, aging infrastructure, and how much water rates will have to be increased to support this? Because once they're in, it's done, isn't it? I mean, once these resorts are up and going, okay, they got, they put in their piping, so on and so forth, but how will that impact our treatment?
You have 30 seconds. You have 30 seconds, sorry.
Okay. That's all. I'll save you 30 seconds.
It's one person at a time, please. Regarding the, thank you, sir, regarding the spa industry, the lodging industry, using the largest percentage of water, they're also paying under the new tier system, if you can just clarify that again. You're the largest user, you pay the most.
Correct. We calculate how much it costs to provide the water, and you pay based on how much you're using. So no one gets a free ride, so if they're using 28%, you know, the numbers I showed up here were anecdotal information, but the way rates are calculated is, what does it cost to provide that water, and that's what they're going to pay. So they're actually paying their fair share.
And the previous system, the tiered system, which we used to encourage less use, is no longer justified in the state of California. And then regarding, just to clarify, because somebody else asked the question, there is, on the Glider Port property, there's only a proposed resort. There's not gone in front of the city, so there is not an approved project there, by any stretch of the imagination at this point, but all the points you made, no, I can assure you, all the points you did make are things we take into consideration when looking at individual projects. Next is Mr. Spittler. Richard, do I have to tell you how this works, or you're familiar? You look good for retired guy.
Richard Spittler, 1556 Centennial. I wanted to thank Dylan for the excellent presentation, and I'm glad you did it and not me. You did an excellent job. I also wanted to thank Mike Kern, because I know over the years, he's brought in millions of dollars to the water and sewer funds, that it's, you know, free money that all of us in this room don't have to pay for. He's really on it, and potentially more to come. I've read the report, and I think it's well-written, it covers everything, and I used to know all that stuff, and it covered all the bases, I think it's well-presented. And it shows the financial and capital improvement needs of these water and sewer funds, the needs we have, and in a very honest and straightforward manner. Of course, it calls for large rate increases. The council cannot ignore the findings of this report. I can kick the can down the road and take projects off, but that will be at its own peril, because it's fraught with legal and financial problems if the council does that. I can appreciate the council in a position of having to deal with this issue. Alternatively, the residents of Calistoga are clearly concerned about the hefty rate increase, because they are not rich and many are on fixed incomes. There's no easy answer to this one. I hope in the coming weeks, a solution can be found. I think both points of view need to be understood and appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spittler. David Moon Wainwright, followed by Rose Leclerc, followed by John. I'm going to let you pronounce your last name, because our city manager has a difference of opinion on how your names are pronounced. David, please.
David Moon Wainwright, 1210 Pine Street, Calistoga. This costs currently under one penny to fill. Under one penny. Even after five or six years of increases, this will be under two cents to fill. I know that multiplied out, it turns into larger numbers, but we've just been through a drought, and it looks like we might go through another one. We live in California, for goodness sake. We can't throw this stuff away. We have to be reasonable about how we live. I'd like to know what the city is doing about gray water projects, in terms of new housing and projects, especially Silver Rose and Calistoga Hills. I'd like to know, in terms of fair and equitable, what is happening when we talk about boron and antimony and the waste? What, are the costs really fair and equitable? And I'm not asking that we gouge the spa owners, I'm just, let's make sure it's fair and transparent. Get these things in the paper, so we can all see them, please. I wonder when, I see that the wine and breweries, their wastewater is so low, their price, in your charts, that we're up there. And then there's, this is just an out-there number, $10,000 per milligram for industrial bottling? MG, it's going to be, it's $9,000 to $10,000 per MG in the waste.
Million gallons.
Million gallons.
I think that's what.
For the bottling plants?
Yeah.
Bottling plant, excuse me.
Billion gallons. Be good to have a key for that, because MG normally stands for milligrams, or sports I don't mind paying my bills, I don't mind, I don't object to paying for what I use.
30 seconds, David.
That's why my family has been trying to be between 20 and 40 gallons per person per day, for years. And we're going to try and hold on to that. I think we all need to figure out how to be better about that, and I want to thank you and support you, because you're doing great work.
Thank you very much. Rose Leclerc, followed by John, followed by Deborah Todd.
Hi, my name is Rose Leclerc, I live at 210 Champagne West, here in Calistoga, which is in Chateau, Calistoga. And so first, I want to say that I pay for our water usage, and so I don't like not being counted for my vote. Second, one of the questions we had was, how do the new rates compare to St. Helena and Yountville? And that was answered with Dylan's presentation, so thank you. And the last point I have is, how much of the rate, and I think some of this was included, but it was a lot of information there. How much of the rate increase that's included in the sewer cost is because of the enormous amounts of boron that the spas are putting into the sewer system? And if that's a big part, why aren't the spas paying a bigger portion? Thank you.
Thank you. If you could just clarify, city manager Feek, and we do have Public Works Director, at this point, we are not taking boron or antimony out of our water stream, our sewer stream, correct?
I'm going to invite Mike up to answer, just to make sure I get the answer right. While Mike is on his way up, I do want to make a couple of comments about something. So currently, there is a geothermal surcharge for our geothermal dischargers, the spas who are putting geothermal water into the sewer. It's more expensive to treat, they're currently paying a surcharge. Years ago, there was what we call a spa settlement agreement, which talks about the city installing meters to actually measure geothermal discharge of all these spa operators. And when we measure and can get an accurate measurement, we can increase their surcharge amount. So one of the projects you'll see in one of these first years is finishing up the installation of these final geothermal meters, in anticipation of, now we have to, we want to make sure it's an accurate, correct billing, even moving into the future. And you'll see, and again, further out years in this rate study, items like boron removal coming into play, where we don't know exactly what we're going to be required to do, but the state of California, in its infinite wisdom, has started sending feelers out that cities should begin anticipating removing boron from its wastewater effluent.
But as of today, there is no expense related to the removal of boron in our system, because it's not being removed. Director Kern.
That's correct.
Thank you. Next, we have John. John, I'm going to let you pronounce your last name, because I know the root of your last name is the same last name as our city manager, and you two have a difference of opinion on this.
Yes, and spelled the same. Hi, John Ficama, it's often mispronounced, at least as far as our family's concerned, Ficama, but anyway, live on 2054 Grant Street. I do want to commend Dylan Feek, as hard as it is for me to say that, or at least to pronounce it that way. Commending him is not hard. That was an excellent presentation, have been to an awful lot of these kind of meetings through the years. It was a lot of information to convey, I thought, very well done. And while I don't like paying increases any more than anybody else does, I'm probably more interested in solvency than a lot of people, and making sure that we pay what we need to pay, so that we, and I'm so sick and tired of having the can kicked down the road in other irresponsible government programs, I think this is a good one for us to demonstrate true fiscal responsibility, pay what we need to pay, get it done, bite the bullet. I think the work you're doing is great, and support the proposals that are out there. So thanks very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Deborah Todd, followed by Doug Molitor, followed by Yvonne Henry.
Thank you. My name is Deborah Todd, I live at 822 Champagne East in Chateau, Calistoga. And I do thought the presentation was good, I liked hearing it again, thank you. Some of the points that I wanted to mention have already been brought up. The thing that concerns me the most is, do we or will we have enough water? I think that's the biggest issue. I agree with the need to be solvent, I don't mind paying my bills. As I mentioned to Dylan previously, when I moved to California, I moved here from Texas, and I came from a community where we were having water rationing, and I know that nobody likes the sound of that or the idea of it, but it was very effective in the town that I lived in, which was Austin. And actually, the outcome was better than anybody expected, as far as the results with the landscaping. Plants improved when water restrictions were applied. So that might be something to reconsider, I know it's been thought about before. And I want to reiterate that, as a resident of one of the mobile home parks, I feel underrepresented, in that I feel like my vote doesn't count, and we pay our bills like everybody else, so I would like to have my vote counted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Regarding water availability, we do have to present a report to the state every year, saying, and we show how much water we think's available, how much will we need for current projects, future projects, et cetera. But as we did during this past drought period, we do have the authority to institute conservation measures, and that applies to everyone in the city, whether you be a commercial property or residential property, so thank you for that. And the city of Austin, which I'm familiar with, has done amazing work in their long-term conservation, it's just changing the mentality, once you do it, and it goes well from there. Amazing for a city that has a river that runs through it, right? Mr. Molitor.
Yes, thank you, I'm Doug Molitor, I live at 2771 Foothill. I've got a couple ideas here that I'd like to present. I'm glad David has come forward and brought them up ahead of time. The first one is gray water, which addresses the aqueduct, which is the 9% times 9% times 9% increase in the next three years. It also has to do with drought, and I've brought up gray water a couple times to this commission. And the advantage of gray water is, there's less water being purchased and reuse of the water once it's used. I would recommend that any new multifamily dwelling and the resorts we've talked about, all install gray water system. There's a California Building Code already in place to do this, and around the world, where the water is precious, they are doing this. There are CAD drawings, the drawings existed, and the city is the entity that could force such a change. That's one recommendation. Two, has to do with the EPA cease and desist, this is the geothermal water. So we'll start back 10 years ago in Petaluma. Petaluma went through a...
Can you do 10 years in a minute and a half?
Yes, I can. Petaluma built a new wastewater system, and what they found was, they had... Petaluma built a new wastewater system, and what they found was, they had a business that was successful, had over 100 employees, was one of the largest sales tax providers. It was Lagunitas Brewery, and they stopped it because they said they could not handle the waste product. So Lagunitas Brewery started trucking the waste product to Oakland. Because Oakland is used to food processing, and they had the system. So I think we have the exact parallel here with the geothermal water being dumped into our wastewater system. I think the old agreement was to appease the owners. And there's nothing new about this because 100 years ago, they did leach mining around here, and they poured cinabar on top of the ore. And what was cinabar? Mercury. And mercury polluted the aquifer. We have that same issue with us in the geothermal water.
Thirty seconds.
Does the pollution? And we're asked to pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Regarding the gray water systems and the recycled water, while the, and having had to sit through those hearings with City Manager Spitler previously, while the Regional Water Quality Control Board was serving us our cease and desist after many discussions, they went so far as to compliment us on a community of our size for the recycled water system that we have as being robust. Now, that doesn't mean there aren't some more improvements that could happen, which we'll constantly be able to take advantage of. And I do know that the two resort projects being built have very robust systems, even self-contained, because at the end of the day, water and sewer is an expense for them that they want to mitigate. Yvonne Henry, followed by Pam Kinsey, followed by Yvette Patiris. I'm sorry if I got that any wrong.
Thank you. First, a few questions. Because the questions that some of us want answered may be too technical to answer without time for staff to reflect upon and respond to, to whom may we send written questions? And is it possible for the entire community to read what questions were submitted and what answers were given? Thought. Okay, is the city question, is the city confident that the problem has been correctly identified?
The problem of?
Water, wastewater. There's a problem that has to be addressed. You're comfortable that you've correctly identified the problems?
I think we gave a whole series of what the problems are.
No, I'm saying you're comfortable.
Let me speak to this. I think it's not one, there's no silver bullet. There's several problems. So in my perspective, just like that slide of the timeline I talked about, to me, the big issues that we've had that have impacted us today, litigation. I don't know how much longer we're gonna be litigating, but we are currently litigating. I don't know what next lawsuit will come. Hopefully, it doesn't. But litigation is an unknown that will always happen.
Actually, my question was not about the litigation. My question was the water and sewage, the accommodations that have to be made. There are problems that have been identified technically, okay, with moving water and sewage. You're comfortable that you've identified those problems, not the litigation?
Oh, yes.
Okay. So, in listening to the Calistoga TomTom, I hear from residents, not in my wallet. So finding increased revenue, you know, historically, if you have a problem like this, you either increase your revenue or you budget cut. So a couple of recommendations have been made. One person suggested that they make Lincoln Avenue a toll road. Another suggested that they charge admission for the Tractor Parade and the Fourth of July Parade, funds to address this problem. Another suggestion was to use the T-Bid funds to enhance the visitor's experience because you would have clean smelling water. The other option is budget cutting. There's only one approach. The city should request that all city departments be required to provide a new budget, which reflects a 15% reduction in their budgets. With the answer is that no increases would be considered for five years, these savings would be used to help pay for these costs. All right, each department should be asked to provide an explanation as to the consequences of those budget cuts, so that we can see how they would cut and exactly what the consequences would be. Good governance is not easy. Good governance requires compromise. Good governance protects the safety of its citizens, including the safety of its wallets. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As you may be aware, we go through a very exhaustive budget process that is open to the public. There are six long, very exciting, interesting meetings in detail about your budget, because this is your budget we're managing. So I welcome you to come to those as well and consider those options. But we do not live high on the hog in this city, I can tell you that for sure. But it is an idea to take forward, starting in February, I believe that process starts, Dylan. So Yvonne, I'll see you at all six of them. Yes, Pam?
Pam Kinsey, 1737 North Oak Street. Just a few comments and thoughts. So in 2017, I paid $2,255 in water sewer bills. If I escalate that at the increases that were proposed, in 2021, '22, I will pay about $3,800. That's a 67% increase. I will probably let all my landscape go dead. I already have a decomposed granite front yard and a gravel backyard. When all of the residents do that, what kind of image does that present to tourists? When you give a discounted rate to part of the rate payers in multifamily or mobile homes or others, are you subsidizing that from the general fund, or does that then put even more burden on those who are paying the full rate? The residential cannot push the cost of this rate increase off to anyone else, but transient businesses can, and other commercial businesses can, by raising the cost of the services that they provide. In fact, if the transient businesses increase their rates, that just increases our TOT intake. So there's a double bonus there. We need to look at other options for paying for the capital improvements. I'm assuming, from what Dylan said, that we're planning on not financing any of these capital improvements that are projected to come forward. That's fine, but financing is another option, which would keep your rates a little bit And then a couple other points. What will you do with the savings if you refinance the debt? So I understand from the presentation that the rate increase does not include the refinance. So it's not, so that's another thing you might consider. We're definitely gonna put aside that side, that set aside for the reserve, then we're planning to refinance. So why wouldn't that get calculated in right now, so that the rate increase does not include And is there any provision to reduce the rates if we do get additional grants? So that's just some thoughts.
Thank you. Dylan, sorry, City Manager Feek, in the increase in subsidies for those qualifying for the care program, where was the source of that funding? Where are you projecting that coming from?
It can come from any source except your rate-based revenue. So it cannot, I cannot cover the cost from another rate payer. So if the general fund's using it, and I think in the past, we've used interest earnings, development impact fees, which can be used.
Okay, you're not off the hook, keep your mic on. Capital improvement financing that has been included in the capital improved projects, not refinancing, but financing of forthcoming projects?
Let me actually ask, refer to Doug Dove, one of the consultants with Bartle Wells. Doug, do we include any refinancing, or not any refinancing, do we include any debt financing in the current rates, water or wastewater?
Doug, could you step up, introduce yourself quickly? Thank you. Doug's the only guy in the room with a tie. Doug, welcome back. Please introduce yourself.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Doug Dove. I'm a consultant with Bartle Wells, and we assisted the city in developing the proposed rates. And the answer is, I believe we did have some borrowing built in to partially fund some of the capital program. Yes.
All right, thank you. And then regarding, there's, what's not built in are any discounts and debt service that may come along if we are finally able to resurface debt?
Right. We did not build in any savings from refinancing. So we developed a worst case, essentially.
And under Prop 218, there is nothing that prevents this council, as we move forward, if there is a savings from financing, refinancing, et cetera, nothing prevents this council from offering that back to the rate payers in the form of a rebate, correct?
Correct. And that is something we see fairly frequently.
Okay.
You know, once the rates are in place, then the financing, the refinancing can proceed.
Got it.
Doug, that rebate, if it were possible, would that be a lump sum, or would it be a, say, a penny reduction in the rates? Or either/or?
Typically, it's a reduction in the rates, but it could be a rebate, either/or.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Yvette Patiris, I'm sorry. Patiris? Yes, oh, come, you have to come up, unfortunately. Thank you. And then after that is Carrie Abrew, and then I'm out of speaker card, so if you want to address the council, start lining up over there. If you can just come to the podium, thank you very much, because we have to make sure people at home can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Yolanda Patiris. I'm at 372, I'm at 372 Foothill Boulevard. My question has been answered. I defer by time to another person. That's what I was trying.
Oh, thank you very much. Nobody gets that time. All right, Carrie Abrew. And then if there's anyone else after Carrie that would like to address the council, I have no more speaker cards, just if you can start a line by those gentlemen back there, so we can go one after the other.
Carrie Abrew, 1720 Reynard Lane. I wish I would've gotten here a little earlier, but I'll watch this on TV. So number four, 1.4.1, Factors for Rate Increases. The primary factors impacting the water rates are the significant cost of water and capital improvements to repair aging infrastructure. It's not a new thing. I mean, you talk to all of us like we don't live here and haven't paid attention to what's going on. So I have a question that actually pertains to the fact that the prudency of this council and this city is, why, with people that come and want to build a house, or build a resort, or build a new restaurant, or build whatever, why hasn't this city taken a certain amount of that money and put a percentage of it away, knowing this day was gonna come? I just don't understand that this is a business, we're running a business, and you're asking the backs of all the citizens of Calistoga. So first you say, please conserve, because we had a drought for seven years, so we all conserved. Many people pulled out their yards and put drought-resistant yards. Now we're being told, it doesn't matter how much you saved and how many times you didn't flush your toilet, now what's being said is, guess what, y'all, you're all gonna pay the price anyway. But there's all these big developments going on, but a certain amount, a percentage of money was not ever taken out and saying, you know what? We have water infrastructure that is gonna really have to be dealt with. Let's take 27% and put that aside right away. But it never has been done, has it? Because there is no, there's a capital improvement budget that includes a lot of stuff, not particular stuff. In my house, if I need my plumbing fixed, I put money aside each month so I can call the plumber for that specific reason. I just, I'm really, I think it's really unfortunate that we all sit here and want to support this town to the best of our ability, but yet, but yet we're told that, it doesn't matter what you do, because guess what? You're all gonna have to pay a price, a bigger price than what really, 10 years down the road, when that valve went out at Kimball Dam, you wait until, what, last summer to drain the dam, to fix an intake valve that's been broken for years? Oh, well, but we got 67 inches of water that year, yeah, last year. But we can buy 70% from another municipality. Okay, well, that, that is imprudency.
Thirty seconds.
That's not prudency. Next year, we may only get 40%, and then what's gonna happen to Kimball Dam, that the 67 inches of water that was in it got drained? I think you need to care more about all of us who live here.
So I'm sorry you missed the beginning of the presentation as well, because it clarified that for the better...
I'm reading it right now.
Excellent. For the better part of 30 years, nobody has set aside any money for capital improvements because there hasn't been any. We've been living hand to mouth. This presentation is showing you, and the details, and working with the consultants is, at some point, and we're reaching that point with the extremely old infrastructure, now we have to all pay the piper. And the fact is, we have, it's not a discussion, you already spoke, it's my turn. So at this point, we have pushed this off for as long as we can. We've got infrastructure that's coming up, up and over 80 years old, it has to be paid for. We only have seven, just under 1,700 rate payers. If we were the city of Santa Rosa, and you could spread these expenses over a much larger number of people, it would be helpful, but that's where we are now. So it's not that we didn't want to do it, we didn't plan ahead. These projects have, and new residents have had to pay in advance for projects. So with that said, yes, please, share with me your name and your address.
My name is Jean Hyderi, 2412 Foothill Boulevard. I also live in a mobile home park, and I would like to have a voice, too. Since we are going to be bearing some of the cost, I think we really should get a voice. And I have just a couple of questions. And I was paying very close attention to the presentation, and I might have missed something, but I don't think so. One of the things that I heard was that people who are using 36% of the water are paying for 39%. Why is that?
The slide that I put up, I believe that was on single-family residential and the water. The slide I put up was essentially just a comparison that we did. One residential customer, or 10 might use, might irrigate, might fill a pool, might do all these other things, others might be very conservative, have zero-scape gardens. So it's different for every residential customer, and that total amount consumed over time changes. So if you looked at the numbers this year versus three years ago, versus 10 years ago, the numbers might be different. The way that the rates are actually calculated, again, and I've said this before, is we calculate the cost to produce that quantity of water, and then we bill, we bill the rate to that user based on that quantity of water. So the slide was just, was really to illustrate, and probably the downside of showing it is, it makes one think, well, if we're only using 36 and we're paying 39. It was just to make sure that there wasn't, you're using 36, but you're paying 50, or you're paying 80. That's what I wanted to make sure was not going on. Because even comments today, there's been a lot of comments about, we'll make, you know, commercial customers pay for it, make, or the residential are paying way too much. I just wanted to make sure that the numbers work, we're close.
Okay. I also want to say, I'm glad for the new law, because in the past, every time a new resort came in, my water bill went up. And that really bothers me. And we are sub-metered at Rancho, but we also have individual water meters. So I don't know how they're calculating that, and how they're dividing the rate among the residents.
The city will have, will work with the property owner, there'll be a master meter, like the front of the property. But many times, a property owner has several separate meters, like PG&E would, other multifamily housing complexes would, they might install their own separate meter. And now that's how the mobile home park owner, in your case, would bill individually, is they do their own meters, they own them, they maintain them, they do all the billing with them.
Okay, so they don't just get one big bill that they then split up?
They get one bill from us, and they use those meters at your mobile home parks to determine how much you, as a mobile home park tenant, how much you should pay. So they, so let's say the big bill is $10,000, and there's 100 meters, and they're gonna divvy up that $10,000 amongst the 100 meters based on however they do it.
Okay. My last question is, what's wrong with the drinking water? I saw that there's $500,000 allotted for taste and odor of drinking water. It smells awful and tastes worse. What's wrong with it?
I'm really hesitant to answer. You know, I'll be very, I'll be very candid. I've lived in many states, I've worked for cities which manage many water systems. I've never tasted water that was the same in two locations. It's always different. I remember Lawrence, Kansas, where I went to graduate school, Lawrence, Kansas, the water tasted like dead fish every single springtime, when the ice would thaw and all the stuff would decompose, and now it's being pumped to the plant. And that's what it tasted like. It tastes different. Here, it's not, in my opinion, it's not that bad. We have a couple of things that I'll add to it. One, we do have naturally occurring stuff that is in our water. We do our best to treat for it. We have what we call disinfection byproducts. So when we clean that water and prepare it for consumption, there are byproducts in the water. There's, we have old pipe. If anyone's ever seen an 80-year-old steel pipe, it's old, and it doesn't look like brand-new PVC from the store. So even though we test daily, routinely, it's safe to drink, you might see discoloration in the... in the water. You might see, it might smell different. Part of that's old pipe, part of that's the water quality, it's a combination of things. And I, and I just, Mike is going to know much more about it than me, and we do water quality reports every single year, and so there's a lot of good information we can provide you on that too.
I just know, it didn't used to taste like this. It used to be really good, and I don't even brush with my teeth with it anymore. And, wait, there was one more thing. I don't remember what it was.
Thank you. We do have an added challenge when we work with the water systems of the individual mobile home parks, because as Dylan said, the water, we, the city gets the water to you, gets it to our meter, then they handle it after that, and there have been some challenges with metering, quality, et cetera, that we work very closely with those mobile home park owners to rectify quickly. Next. Yes, sir.
Tom Bolser, 1705 Michael Way. I just have one question. I saw all these numbers up there, millions of dollars and stuff like that. What is the total budget for the water and sewer per year? Anybody know that question? Answer?
He's looking it up right now. Gloria? Total enterprise fund you want?
The whole thing. Whatever it costs. I didn't see it anyplace.
The total budget, let me just, I'm sorry, I'm getting the right slides. For the water, total revenues, so think of revenues and expenses in a given year. Total revenues in, let's just use this current year budget, $11,251,000.
And that's just water, or that's water and sewer?
That's just, it's just the water system, that includes impact fee revenue. Total expenses, $7,165,000.
And what's the sewer amount?
The sewer amount is... Same year, $13 million, which includes one-time revenues, and $6.8 million in expenses. So on the slides and for the presentation, if anyone wants to make note, page 11, page 12, or 22, excuse me, you can see those. So the thing that I just caution you on, is some years when we collect a lot of one-time revenues, we're collecting the money, and then you'll have, the next year might be an expensive year for doing the project. So, it's constantly going like this.
Okay, so we have a budget somewhere between $25 and $30 million every year we deal with, right?
In some years, yes, in other years, no.
Okay, whatever.
Sir, sir, I'm sorry, but what you're asking, so if you're asking for one fiscal year, if you want, if you want just an operating revenues expense, we can give you that, there's a lot of numbers and data, but I think the question you're asking is, you know, it's a big number one year, it's a lesser number another year, and it can all be dependent on what kind of projects we have to do for the year.
Some of it's grant money also.
I agree. So it's up in the millions of dollars somewhere, right?
Correct.
And you're asking for a $360,000 increase from all these people right here, for a 15% increase. I can't believe that you can't cut $360,000 out of a 20-plus million-dollar budget, period. Second of all, my water bill, my own personal water bill, is more than my PG&E, my telephone, my internet, and all other, all other utility bills combined. So, that's where I stand. How can a water be more than all the other utilities? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Paul, welcome back.
Hi, thank you, and Happy New Year. My name is Paul Knoblick, live at 1019 Cedar Street in Calistoga. And seven years ago, I happened to be very involved with the 2010 Water and Wastewater Revenue Advisory Study Committee. And so what I've heard tonight, and have been reminded of, is it's the same painful process. It's difficult, the truth is hard to hear. Dylan, I followed your presentation closely, and I'd have to say, at least based on my experience, that every word you have spoken is true. I'd like to ask the council if the, if the city would give the same energy through this upcoming year, that it has given in this past year, to looking out 10 years from now, and how we can somehow think out of the box and possibly, hopefully, get our hands around this. This last gentleman just said that his water bill equaled the cost of all of his other utilities combined. I happen to be a certified financial planner, so I work with numbers. The city gave me this afternoon, my water and sewer bills have been for the past 12 months. Having just paid the second installment of my property taxes last week, I'm very reminded that in five years from now, based on the revenue, on the increases that are going to likely be passed, my water and sewer bills for Calistoga for those 12 months will equal my property taxes for the whole year. And if I'm fortunate enough to live another 25 years to my early 90s, like my dad, the cost of my water and sewer bills will equal the cost of my mortgage payment. So that means, in a flash, 5, 10, 15, 20 years from now, we are pricing people out of the market to even live in Calistoga, or to buy a home in Calistoga, because the cost of just that basic service is so significantly high. So again, I'm asking, could the city perhaps, this coming year, give the same attention to looking out 10 years from now? And what can we do to think out of the box to try to get a hold on it? We've heard gray water, I haven't heard capturing of rainwater. How about dredging out the Kimball Reservoir in a low year? Let's really think about that, because we know the cost of the water for the city from the Kimball Reservoir is lower than the cost of buying it from the Napa Aqueduct. And maybe there's some real things that we as Calistogans can pull together and come up with that could make a real difference, so that we can not, so this can become sustainable in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knoblick. We would love to dredge Kimball Dam, or Kimball Reservoir, but the state of California has a different opinion on that, Paul, but we'll keep pushing that one. Yes?
Jerry Hanson, 418 Burgundy North in Calistoga. I just have one comment to make. It's that unlike the homeowners, the tourist trades make money on the water that they use. So it seems to me that they should bear more of the cost of water. That's all, thank you.
Jerry, in the, in the San Joaquin, San Joaquin? Dylan, is that the ruling?
San Juan Capistrano.
San Juan Capistrano ruling, the state of California said you can't do that. We had that process. We had the tiered system to charge more. We must charge the same price for a gallon of water to everyone that we service. So, we have to look for some more interesting ways perhaps. Yes, ma'am?
Sheila Allen, 1906 Foothill Boulevard. I have a question about the determination of the way you determine our bills on the sewer system. Because my bill averages about $105 a month. I'm a single widow. I don't use a lot of water, okay? And my water bill is, in two months, is $32, but my sewer system is 170. So, like you said, 105 bucks a month for water and sewer. But I mean, I'm not using much water. It's all for the sewer. So if the major part of my bill is for the sewer, I want to be sure that the sewer system is the best sewer system. You understand what I'm saying?
Seems very fair to me.
Pay that bill.
Yeah.
Okay? And is, because my house is under 1,000 square feet. How do you determine that fee per property? Per individual property? You know, by square footage? I just was inquiring about that as well.
I'll give you an answer for that.
Okay, thank you.
Quick, Down and Dirty, how do we figure the sewer portion of a person's bill?
Quick, Down and Dirty, single-family residential. If you're a home, that's your usage. If you're in a multifamily, it's a different. If you're in a mobile home park, it's different. If you have particular questions about your individual bill, just come meet with me anytime, we'll take a look at it. But if you're a single-family residential—
A hookup to the sewer system is a hookup to the sewer system.
Flat fee.
So. Yes, sir. Please share with us your name and your address, should you so choose.
All right. Sean Barron, 1758 North Oak. So, getting back to Chris's point earlier about the rate fees, and under 218, everyone will play the same base rate? Actually, that means the larger users will, in theory, because there's no higher tiers, be paying less money than they used to. So—
Correct.
The point is, everyone's going to be paying the same rate, which is great, and that's fair ball. But at the end of the day, the average homeowner will be paying sort of more than they used to based on resorts. Also, getting the same point, 218, you said you cannot then charge those high-rate users on their water bill. Getting someone else's point, the residency tax could go up. These resorts that have been approved and have paid a lot of money for infrastructure, even though many people warned against this when Prop C was approved, that this was going to be an issue, a lot of the expense that they're paying is to actually get water and sewer updated into their facilities. So they're not generally repairing most of Calistoga. So I think going forward, and maybe, we can't do it retroactive, but maybe with the influx of dollars, what we've seen through the whole Napa Valley, I used to live in St. Helena, I do not want to see this town become St. Helena. I think you need to look at these new projects, and even existing projects, and maybe look at increasing the residency, residency tax fees, so that that can help, kind of, help with long-term things, because as he pointed out, $360,000 really does not take care of much of this at all. So I think maybe going forward, we need to relook at that, and maybe more of a shared burden by these new resorts and, and people coming to the valley that can't afford to pay those prices, trust me.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Charlotte.
Charlotte Williams, 59 View Road. Speaking to having an excellent wastewater system, there is a court order that should be applied to the spas in town regarding monitoring and metering their effluent. And they may be paying more in the proposed rates already, but if they, if all the spas, if all of those businesses that were dumping the water that's heavy with boron, other minerals, heavy metals, if they were completely monitored, metered, and were paying for a system that would be taking the boron especially out, so that wastewater could be treated enough, so that could be sold to vineyards or surrounding properties that were willing to use it, but can't use it now because of the boron, boron kills the grapes, wouldn't that be a revenue stream for the city? And I believe there is a court order, I didn't see that in Dylan's timeline, but spas are supposed to be monitored and metered, so that we all know what's going into the sewer system, that they're putting into it. And I suppose there might be other businesses that are using hot water and dumping into it, but that would sure help make it clear where a lot of it's—
Juan Martinez, I live at 1122 Washington Street. I'm a renter, and I've never gotten notified of any of this information. But I have one simple question, because of listening to studies of water consumption. Excuse me, I'm wondering how safe it is for our drinking in the long term? I didn't hear that. I heard it tasted funny, but, you know, in long term, are there any studies going on for, you know, what's really in our water for consumption?
Public Works Director Kern, could you just quickly say what we have to, the state and federal regulatory agencies were required to test for, and how often?
So we, we test for certain constituents on a weekly basis, primarily BACTD, or make sure that the water has sufficient treatment, so that people aren't getting sick. We do quarterly testing for other constituents. We do annual testing for certain constituents, and then we do a three-year testing for lead and copper in certain homes. Right now, all of our water meets state standards or better, with the exception of the disinfection byproducts. We're struggling with that because of the amount of total organic carbon in the water that reacts with the chlorine and produces those byproducts. We're installing an aerator in the Mount Washington tank, and that should be online. We've already installed it, we've been having some problems with the electrical, and we should have that resolved hopefully by the end of this week. The new Fage tank that we've got a FEMA grant for is out to bid currently. We received notice today that they've given us an extension on the actual construction of the project, which is great, because they really compressed the schedule to something less than four, four months, which would have reflected in a very expensive bid. So we're repackaging that, and giving the contractors some additional time to bid on that project. It too will include an aerator in the tank, and also a, a fill from the top and take from the bottom pipe system, whereas right now, the tank fills and discharges from the bottom, so we don't get sufficient turnover in the tank. But from a health quality perspective, with the exception of THMs, we meet or exceed the state standards.
Anyone else? Yes, please.
Mary Sherman, 105 Ivy Lane. Thank you, Dylan. That was very educational. And that's the point I want to make, is that I would like to see some sort of campaign that joins the city and our school system to help our youth understand how precious our water is. I, I work in one of the hotels, and I see the amount of water that's used by teenagers to shower every day, and I don't think they really get how precious, precious the water is. And so I think in the long term, we need to start educating, educating our population, that it's not just about cost, but it's just about availability. And so I don't know who would run this campaign, or how, how we could do this, but I think we do need to have some sort of program for all of us. I've lived in countries where we didn't have water, and people brushed their teeth and let the water run. We just need to do basic things to just stop the amount of water that we're using.
Thank you. During the droughts, we did have a, when we had water conservation officers, they did programs with the schools to talk about water conservation. To be honest, I don't know where that is today, but I think it's something that should be continued all along. And the lodging industry does have the water conservation cards in the rooms, but that doesn't mean a teenager's going to listen to it. Next.
Donald Williams on View Road. So I talked to over 100 Calistogans in the last month or so about water, and so I'm just going to report the comments that people volunteered to me. Some of these you've already heard, but I'm just going through my list quickly. The first thing I heard was the water tastes terrible. The second, rates already too high. Third, new resorts are supposed to stabilize rates. So these are things that you've heard, but I heard them over and over again. I know that they paid, it was interesting, you know, that they paid money already, of course. But folks, almost to a person, had the impression that, that the rates were going to not be raised up higher. I also was on that water commission in 2010, and so folks were, it came up so many times, out of 100 people or so, it came up so many times that they felt misled about the promises there. Out of those I talked to, 95% wanted to sign a letter objecting to the rates increasing. And I believe over 500 people actually did, between 500 and 600, I think, will have sent in a letter. So there's a large number of Calistogans who objected, and extrapolating, if 95% of the 100 or so I talked to objected, that means around 1,500 out of the, 1,600 out of the 1,700 ratepayers would object. The last comment that I wrote down, because it came up so often also, was a little bit sad, but it was this, that people felt it was a fait accompli, that what they said wasn't going to matter, and that the rates were going up anyway. Yeah, I didn't, I couldn't respond to that, I just wrote it down over and over again. So, I like the idea, which has come up a couple of times here, to give my own input, which is, people don't want, I mean, it's obvious to me, people don't want this rate increase. They don't want to pay for it. However, we've seen the case, we hear the case, that it's important to do it. So— So a rebate program makes a lot of sense to me. However, I wouldn't make it divisive. I wouldn't rebate only to some people. I would rebate it to all the ratepayers and find a 15% cut elsewhere in the budget. I looked at it. Out of $11 billion, I'm sure the $360,000 can be found to pay for this water, these water improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Dennis Lang, 1322 Cedar Street. And there's a couple of things I want to comment on. First being, and I came here 20-some years ago, and so I'm not certain how this occurred, but I had in my neighborhood an example where a person put a well in their backyard that was actually already there, and I have one in my backyard that's there, it's been capped. And so historically, I'd like to know why if spas and everything can tap into water here, groundwater, and soak in vineyards, how come we can't in the city? Or why, because I asked and I was told at, over at City Office, that I could not do that. Okay, so that's one thing I'd like to know. And the second thing I'd like to know is what is the protocol or what is the timeline for these protest letters that we have? Don just mentioned he's gotten over 600. I have a number of them in my hands as well. I've sent them to the City Council already, my own responses. What's the timeline on that and where are we going with that?
Sure. In terms of, and I'll give either Dylan or Mike a chance to answer why you can't drill a well in the city. That's news to me.
I already have a well there.
Okay, got it. Regarding the protest letter, what would happen is the deadline for a submission of a protest letter would be the close of the public hearing. What we have the option to do, and I believe that this council will more than likely do, is we will continue the public hearing to a later date. So there can be more discussion. Part of the reason also is so we can have a community forum. Anyone who's gone to one, they're much more informal. There's not the protocol of the Brown Act, et cetera, so we can answer more questions. The reality, though, and the question to ask is, and nobody up here opposes the Prop 218 concept. I understand it. It's there. What everyone needs to understand, though, is if the protest letter is successful, or the protest is successful, at the end of the day, we're paying for these increases somewhere. And what that would mean in effect is, because it's our fiduciary responsibility to operate the system, is we would take those funds out of the general fund, which means we defund other projects or services somewhere else. So.
Exposed.
Correct, absolutely. And we'll go through all of those options. And you know, what was sent out in the Prop 218 letter is the maximum that we would or could ask for. And then back to Don's comment about rebates, the only rebate I would support as we move forward, Don, would be one to everybody. So as a ratepayer across the board, if we encounter our savings from refinancing or we get a FEMA grant, that that applies to all ratepayers, however we work out that percentage. So yes, technically, protest letters would be due today if the council tonight chooses to close the public hearing. I'm going to make a recommendation other than that, but that is at the pleasure of the council to decide that. Anyone else?
How about the wells?
Oh, I'm sorry, wells. Why can't you dig a well or drill a well in the city?
So there are provisions in our municipal code that will allow for cold-water wells to be drilled. They have to be done under a watchful eye. Engineers report prepared to make sure that there aren't any detrimental impacts to the surrounding aquifer. So the best thing, my best answer to that is come and see me at my office and we can walk through the process. It will, if you're successful in your petition to reinstate your well, it will necessarily require the installation of a backflow prevention device so that your well water does not co-mingle with the public water supply. And that would be something that would have to be installed at your expense, and then you would have to have it tested annually to make sure that it's functioning properly.
And if you want to drill this, I know, a hot well, you need to go to the state for permission to do that.
Correct. That's through the geothermal and oil and gas.
Gas and oil.
Gas and oil.
They have a very long name. Anyone else? Yes, please. You have to come up to the podium for us, please. You can ask a question very quickly while this other woman walks toward the front.
I'm just wondering, is there a Plan B in place if the day comes when NAPA says we can't sell you our water anymore?
No.
Okay. My other question is.
Sorry, there's, I'm about to be corrected. Yes, there is.
So the water that we get from the MBA is our water. We pay NAPA to treat it and pump it to us. So we get an annual allocation depending on what the allocation from the state water contractors is. Our total allocation that we're entitled to, depending on the percentage given, is 1,925 acre-feet per year. Last year, we got 100% of our entitlement, but because the reservoir is completely filled and spilled, we're only allowed to carry over 50% of that, or approximately 960 acre-feet, which we have in our piggy bank right now. The allocation for this water year is currently at 20%, which is 385 acre-feet.
How much did the fire affect our water supply?
So far, it has not.
Okay. And.
I have to let some others speak if you're, if that's okay? Ma'am?
Hello, I'm Dolanda Abarka, and I live in Terry Magnolia, Calistoga Springs. I only have one quick question. The general fund has quite a bit of money in it, doesn't it?
The which fund?
The general fund.
That's our operating fund.
Is there any way that you can put that money so we can generate interest?
Do we have?
Yes, we do, but there are certain rules around how we do it. So, you know, in a city, for city government, you can't be as aggressive as you might be like with your own investments. So you have to be incredibly conservative. One of the things that we've done in years past, we put it in an account that we call LAIF. It's a local agency investment fund. It's a statewide fund. It generates not very much, but for a general fund, and we sit on a lot of, you know, many millions of dollars, it's, you know, $50,000 a year, some years, less than others. Years ago, it was worth much more. But we have rules we have to abide by. We have to be very conservative, so it's not a lot of interest.
But you are doing it, aren't you?
Yes, we do.
That's what I.
Thank you. Just another quick point, too, about the potential options. If we don't, if a protest process is in place and is successful and we are unable to raise rates, understand, as Dylan explained during the presentation, that eliminates his ability to refinance our debt. So while the cost of operating the system we would have to pay for out of the general fund, the refinancing of the debt does not allow you the utilization of your general fund against your rates. So that's why when we talk about a concept of a rebate, you take your rates up. Dylan's able to demonstrate that we are generating enough debt service to cover back. So just something to bear in mind. Yes, please. Hello.
I'm Norine Moses. I live at 1419 Fourth Street. And before I make my comments, I would like to say I certainly appreciate the fact that each one of our council members has been willing to come forward and put in the hours that you do to serve our community. And I am so grateful that we have the quality of the fine people on our current city staff as well as people like Richard Spitler, who are willing to come into very frustrating careers and make careers of it. I thank you for doing that. My own father served on the city council for 17 years, what you might say, back in the day, and it was not nearly as complex then as it is now. And it was still a really draining experience for him for all of those 17 years, but he was willing to come forward like all of you are. So thank you.
Thank you.
And my comment is that each one of you now is having to deal with the decisions that were made years ago. And I came back to Calistoga in 1980, and at that time, anybody that you spoke to about water pipes, sewer pipes, city conditions, would say they all need to be redone. They're all old. They're all deteriorating. But that was not done. What was done, we developed what were very nice other projects that are all nice to have. The ones that come quickly to my mind are our swimming pool, which is a wonderful thing to have and that we now pay to maintain. We pay the staff. We have our nice park where we have wonderful sports, and it all costs money to maintain. We have a recreation department. It's wonderful. It all costs money. And while all of those things were being done, nothing was being done to all of that stuff that was already there, already needing work. So the point of what I want to say is, I hope as long as this city council and this city staff is working on these questions, that you will tighten the wonderful ideas about, wouldn't it be nice to do this? Wouldn't it be nice to do that? They're all nice ideas, but with the basic infrastructure crumbling, I think it was very poor judgment on the part of previous councils and city staff to do the things that have been done and just neglect all this that is the basis of keeping it all going. So that's all I have to say. Button up the purse string, please, in the future, and do take care of what has to be done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Starting with repaving Fourth Street, right?
After we get the new water.
All right. She listened to you. Is there anyone else?
I just have an idea for the sewer system. When we wanted a pool, we put up the thermometer at Calmart. People gave money for that and we got the pool. How about putting a sewer for a thermometer?
We're trying to do that involuntarily right now. Anyone else before I close the public comment, not the public hearing, just to be clear? All right, thank you. I'll close the public comment, bring it back to the council for questions, comments, concerns. Remember, the recommended action this evening after receiving the presentation in the public comment was to give staff direction.
Well, I'd like to thank everybody that showed up. I would like to thank all those that spoke. Your comments were well-taken and will be well-considered. We have worked long and hard on doing what we are attempting to do. It was my honor to be one of the two councilmen that helped do this. I won't hide that fact. It was my recommendation. The 14 months were long. They were hard. Many decisions were made. Many numbers were crunched. But I certainly agree with the last speaker, Ms. Moses, about us on this council having to pay for many of the sins of the past. For years, and I've been in Calistoga now 23, 23 years, so I'm getting maybe out of rookie status, nothing has been done underground. All the nice, pretty stuff that we have is wonderful, as she pointed out, but it doesn't make this city run. It doesn't make this city work. You have to have the infrastructure, and I think we here in Calistoga are a microcosm of what is going on in the country. Our roads are failing, our bridges are failing, our airports are failing, our cities are failing, simply because the money that would have fixed them was sent in different places that looked nice. We fought wars that didn't have to be fought. We paid people that didn't have to be paid. We did things that did not benefit the United States as a whole. I think we made those same mistakes here, and I think we have a chance now to rectify it, and I will stand strong on those principles. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Councilmember Kraus, you're leaning forward.
Yeah. I was the other member of the city council. It was on the committee or the ad hoc committee to study the water and wastewater rates. And as many people have said, it's not an easy thing to do. But what it comes down to is, is we have that 9% increase in the cost of getting the water up here from NAPA. It's our water, but there's a cost in getting it here. And that is, as Dylan spoke, a significant cost of the rate increase. I don't know that there is any increased cost. In fact, I would be shocked if there is an increased cost of water delivery and sewage processing as a result of the new resorts that came in. I think we went over all of that exhaustively, and they are probably actually paying more than their fair share in developing the infrastructure, in particularly. And they will pay their fair share of the water consumption and sewage processing. So I've heard a lot of comments, myself and the community, about the new developments and a feeling by people that they were paying through their water rates to bring those people into town, and that's just simply not true. The other issue I would, the other thing I would like the council to consider is, before we set any rates, if we're able to set rates, that we have a couple of options that would involve rebates and/or general fund subsidy to the rate so that we can get a good idea of what kind of an impact there might be on the general fund and how we're going to distribute that in an equitable manner to the ratepayers. So that's all I have, and I'd like to hear what the other council members have to say.
Ace, Matt Dunford?
Well, I just, I have a point of clarification of a couple of your comments, Jim. Really, the issue of previous councils going back 20 or 30 years was the fact that they did not pass rate increases at the time. It's not because we built a swimming pool that we are in this, having this problem. The problem is that previous councils were pressured by the community to not increase rates, and that is what created the lack of income to make the necessary infrastructure upgrades over time. So we are paying that price now. It really does not have much to do with Logview Park, Unity Pool, or other facilities that we all benefit from because that comes from a different fund, which is the general fund. And the primary revenue for the general fund is TOT. I had a question for the city manager. So my understanding is that the enterprise funds cannot operate at a profit. We cannot, over time, it cannot be a profit center.
Correct.
So if we make changes in the future, such as refinancing, which lowers the cost, and if we're showing surpluses or profits, we are, I'm assuming obligated by law, to somehow change the rates so that the revenues are relatively equal to the cost?
No, not, not per se. So here is just an example. Let's say that the council finds savings, and it's $200,000, that's a nice round number. The council has, you always have a choice to return that money to ratepayers. You should not turn a profit. We've talked about deferred maintenance, deferred projects. Let's say we have a project scheduled for next year. Many times, what I've done before, I'm not saying to do this here, I'm just saying what I've done before is, hey, we achieved savings, let's move a project up a year. So you bring a project forward, you get it done now, now you're moving forward with a project that was scheduled for later, you're doing it now. So you can adjust your schedule that way. Prohibitive of the city council to do that, too. So I think that just the key is that when you're charging your customers, you can't be generating profit. And that's why we go through an audit, we determine how much money we have in reserves. We always have a capital improvement program list. have a capital improvement program list, which goes out many, many years. So these are the things we're looking at doing, trying to identify funding sources for those, too. But I don't, you don't have to return the money, but it's certainly your, within your ability to do that.
Dylan, further to that point, could it be also then used to reduce debt?
Yes, that's another option.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, my only last comment is, I mean, I'm very concerned about the protest because that's going to put the council in a similar position that all the other councils have been in, where we just don't do anything and we continue to kick the can down the road, and we're just creating much, much bigger problems for the future. So, I mean, I don't want to pay increased water sewer bills. I have a business, if you knew what I paid in water and sewer bills each month, it'd make your mouth hit the floor. It's incredibly expensive. It's not that easy, but, you know, we need to exercise some good judgment here.
Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Yes. First, I want to say thank you to everybody who showed up tonight. And as I say, together we can, we will try to solve this problem. But I would like to say that the city is like a business. A few years ago, I took over a business that was falling apart. And it was very painful to invest money, my own money, to fix it for somebody else's mistakes. And as now, it's painful to invest in, to fix these old problems. But I think in the long term, it will be a win-win situation for everybody and for, and also we had to think about the new generations, our kids and grandkids, that, you know, we had to live a better city for them, a better community for them. So right now, I know it's painful, it's hard to come up with this money, but I think together we can find some other options. Maybe there is some grants, maybe there is some money up there that we had to do more research and see what we can do. And I'm glad everybody expressed their opinion, so it will give us, you know, we can think what to do next. And just want to clarify, if you can explain us one more time, why we cannot apply for more grants or refinance loans?
We apply for every grant we can. A lot of that's going to be Mike Kern, his staff. They do a fantastic job. Several grants are already being approved, several projects we're currently working on. A lot of times, these agencies, they look at the same information that a rating agency would look at when they're getting ready to prepare for debt issuance. So are you meeting your existing covenants that you've made to your bondholders? How much money do you have in reserves? How much rate-based revenue do you have in any given year, which you can use to pay off this new bond you're asking to be issued? So they ask these same questions, and, you know, the answers for us are the same, and we hear the same thing back from them. In some cases, applying for new grants, we even become ineligible. It's almost like we're too poor to get free money. And so we try to apply in every case, in every instance. And as I even said earlier, there are times where we even put costs on to new development, make sure even, you know, even they can help do some of these projects. Lower Washington, that sewer trunk main was a great example. We got to do a project. Rather than us go through the process of time, let's have the project pay that. But we'll, I think the most important point is that we will always try, we'll continue to try, because that's savings right here in our community, if we can get other people's money.
And the reason that I say that is painful to invest in a business and to do improvements is because once you do it, you can offer better services. You can, you can, you know, be a better quality and provide better services. So it's hard to invest, but we had to do it at some point.
Thank you very much. I too want to thank Gary and Jim for spending the last year-plus on this project. I know it's been exciting. I also want to thank Doug and Abigail from the consultants who've worked hard. And they, I asked this in our previous meeting that they were both in, is our situation unique to the other cities throughout the state of California that they work with? And the answer was no. We're all in the same place. We're all trying to figure this out. And there are no good solutions. I mean, at the end of the day, you've got to pay for the services you provide. When I first ran for city council, one of the points I ran on, and this is going back seven, eight years ago now, was I found it appalling where I came from, that there is a utility, the enterprise fund, that was not self-sustaining. So here I am, eight years later, and we're still not able to allow it to be self-sustaining, meaning we are funding it out of the general fund. And that's just, it's not a best practice. It's not the way you should be operating enterprise fund. But with that said, I've been here during that whole period, it is not an easy solution because we don't have the ratepayer base to spread these costs over. We've had significant investment already in the projects that this community has approved, and that saved us some funding. And when they become online, and I was one of the ones who said it multiple times in the meetings, and I can pull up those videos to show you that once they're online as consumers, they will sustain. I said, we'll never reduce our rates, but it'll help sustain. Short of us shrinking our water and sewer system, which we can't do, or adding hundreds upon hundreds of new ratepayers, we don't have many other solutions. I, again, the Prop 218 protest process, it's there if you should so choose to use it. What I would ask at this point, if you haven't already submitted one, take the information that's been provided to you, take the information that's available, and consider that. But also know, at the end of the day, even if the protest is successful, we still have to pay for all of this, and it comes out of the general fund at the sacrifice of other services or projects, and hamstrings us a bit in our ability to refinance debt. I would be the biggest supporter of, if this, if the rate schedule passes or some modification of, any savings that we get that are prudent, refinancing debt, et cetera, I would recommend a rebate back. Some of the things that are out of our control, the litigation matter, I mean, I could go on, again, for days about it. And unfortunately, the system that we have in the United States, when it comes to lawsuits, is they can repackage them and repackage them and repackage them. And $1.6 million for us to win multiple times is appalling. But we are obliged, as a utility operator, to protect you as the ratepayer, your water supply, so we must continue to defend. I have been asked, why didn't you settle? That seems stupid. Well, the original request was 10 times greater than the amount spent, and that was on the settlement. So if there was logical and reasonable way to do that, we would have done so, but that will continue. And then we have unintended consequences. I know the cease and desist that we've spoken about. There were some people in the community who felt very passionately and very strongly about that, and they pressured the state heavily to enforce or impose a cease and desist. Now, I'm not opposed to some of the actions the state wants us to take. What I was, I'm opposed to is how they collapsed the timeline, forcing an additional $2.5 million of corrections to occur in a very short timeline before we can get ourselves on the ground with the new rates coming in from ratepayers. So there was an unintended consequence there. Irony being, some of the biggest advocates for the cease and desist against this city are also the same people who are protesting the impact of that, which is the increased cost of operation. So everything has a consequence, so let's bear that in mind. With that said, I want to thank all of you for coming. My recommendation for the council's consideration is that we leave the public hearing open, okay? And we have the, tentatively scheduled the community forum for any other questions on the 17th of January at 6:00. With that said, I'll take input because we do have to give guidance to city staff.
I have a suggestion, well, not a suggestion, but an observation. I do not want to close the public hearing tonight, but the schedule that has been proposed means that the earliest we could vote on this would be in the first meeting in February, following the timeline of the next meeting, which would be two weeks from today, which would be the 16th, public hearing would be open again. Then we would have the mayor's forum, and then the next meeting would be February 6. Do you really want to take it out that far? Or could we reschedule the mayor's forum?
Community forum?
To the 10th. To the 10th, and then have our final public meeting two weeks from tonight.
I would be open to that.
I have a follow-up to just what you're talking about. Dylan, if you can correct me on this, if we were to close the public hearing tonight, we still have opportunities to work as a community to make modifications. We're not approving any specific plan. What we're doing is we're putting the council in a position so that we can take some step forward to help solve this problem without being completely restricted from a potential success of a protest.
The, when the council closes the public hearing, that's, that's when you're no longer accepting written protests. So Kathy has, a lot of stuff has been delivered here today. Stuff has been delivered over these last 45 days. We've been keeping track of, we'll be counting these. But when council, if you continue the public hearing, that means people can continue to bring in protests. Once you close the public hearing, that means you're no longer accepting written protests. And the rates, whatever you decide to do with them, whatever options you consider, that window's open, as long as you want it to be open. It, really, the only thing that is tied to that close of the public hearing is how long you continue to collect the protests.
Okay, so for me, I feel that by allowing this protest, allow, not by not closing this public hearing tonight, that I would be violating my fiduciary responsibility to this city because of the real potential for the success of a protest, which would prohibit this council from taking any action as it relates to an increase, not how much, an increase of sewer and water rates. That's my bottom-line point.
Councilmember Lopez Ortega, any, my, sorry, my, my reasoning for leaving the public hearing element open is if there are people that still are concerned or interested in filing a protest, we've heard, I've heard significant concern about, this happened over the holiday season. There was a rush to do so on their part because they didn't have all the facts. We've now presented them with more facts. I wanted to give the oppo-
Right. And I understand it. And my point is, is this body going forward, even if we close the public hearing tonight, can still take all of those, that public input into consideration in its final determination. It does not prohibit us in any way from listening to everybody's concern.
Okay.
My question, Kathy, have you been receiving letters from the Spanish community?
Yes, I have. And I have protests in Spanish specifically that I've been receiving as well.
Okay. That will be my only concern, that the Spanish community get well informed what happened in these meetings. So that will be the only reason for me to keep the public hearing open.
Was the Prop 218 letter bilingual?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just to further articulate my concern, this is a very, very complicated matter. And Dylan, you did a fantastic job in telling the story. If somebody walks to your front door and you don't know anything about this, the details or the understanding, and somebody says, will you sign this form? Do you want your water and sewer rates to go up or not? What do you think they're going to do? Nobody wants their rates to go up. We're a small town. People know how to mobilize, and I am very confident that this could be, that could, that could happen. And we're going to be stuck, put in the exact same position that every other council has always been in for the last 30 to 40 years. And I don't want that to happen. I want to hear everybody's input. I want this council to debate and deliberate and come up with a solution. But I don't want us to be completely handcuffed and not have the ability to make any change on this whatsoever. And that's exactly what could really happen.
Dylan, sorry, Councilmember Barnes?
As much as I would like to see this rate increase go through, I spent the last 14 months of my life working on it, I must respectfully disagree with you, Michael. There seems to be a ground swell in the community that I do believe we cannot ignore. As much as I disagree with that ground swell, those voices need to be heard. And I think we, our major duty as this council is to hear the voices and act on the voices of our community, even if we disagree with what they're saying. If that's their will, if 50.1% of the community says no to this, as much as I dislike that, I would go along with it. Therefore, I think we should keep it open. And secondly, Dylan, I have a question for you. On the page seven of this, and I'll read it, it says, "Rate increases subject to majority protest." At the public hearing, which is this, "The proposed rate increases are subject to majority protest. If 50% plus one of affected property owners submit written protests of the proposed rate increases, the increases cannot be adopted." My question is, is a petition a written protest by an individual, or is that just somebody, like somebody out there, you said, I believe, somebody knocked on your door and said, do you want your rates to go up or down? Of course, you're going to sign a petition. Is that the intent of this law? Or does it mean that if you don't want that rate increase, you have to take the time to sit down, my name is Joe Blow, my rate number is such and such, I do not want this rate increase? I think that is the intent of the law. I'm not a lawyer, but that's the way I read it, and I don't think a petition is valid. Can you comment on that, or do you, do we have a legal opinion on that?
I don't give legal opinions.
No, but have you had one given to you?
We spoke, I've spoken with city attorney, I've spoken with Doug Dove, Bartle Wells Associates does this all across the state of California. So there are lots of different, lots of different ways cities receive these. I think the way, if you look at the language and how it's written, it's that the cities are collecting information from the parcel owner. One of the things, the property owner, one of the things that, at the advice of Bartle Wells that we've discussed and we've talked about, is what happens if it's a parcel owner, but the tenant submits a protest? Doug has been the first one to say, count it. Absolutely count it. It's a parcel owner, it's a one-to-one, and do you even have the staff time to, you know, is this person the owner, is this person the parcel, the tenant who's actually paying the bill? So I think, I think it's, and there's going to be some cities who would not, say, nope, that's not a valid protest, and could toss it out. So I think, I would just say that it's, it's a messy process. For us, we've been delivered a lot of things yet today. I still have not even had a chance to go through them, so I can't give you a legal opinion yet, but it'll be one I'll get for you as soon as we're able to review, get information from city attorney.
I would like that opinion because, to me, this reads that each individual property owner or property owner has to submit it in writing, not sign a petition that says they don't want water increases. That's the way I read it. I could be wrong, I'm not a lawyer.
Let me ask the burka question. These protests that you have with you, are they a petition, or are they the recommended letter?
They're the individual letters. I don't have a petition.
All right, okay.
But you do-
I was, I had heard, and again, through the grapevine, there were petitions being circulated. I don't know if that is correct or not. But if you have individual letters...
Or it could be a pre-written draft-
Oh, yeah, it does make a, yeah, here, it could be that, yes.
And my only follow-up to your biggest concern is for us to listen to people and give them the opportunity to voice their opinions and concerns. And I don't see that changing at all. We still have the forum, we still have subsequent meetings to come up with a final solution.
But we don't know if 50, or 51, or 52, or 48% are for or against this. And if we find out later that 52% were against it, and we passed it anyhow, I think- And if we find out later that 52% were against it, and we passed it anyhow, I think we have failed as our duty as council people. We may have failed in a fiduciary duty, as you point out, but I think the higher duty is to take care of the will of the people.
On a different posture on that, if you have submitted a protest letter previously, and based upon the information you were given tonight, you'd like to withdraw that. You are welcome to do so as well. It's just new facts can change your opinion, and it's got to go somewhere else, so.
My personal opinion on this is that we should close the public hearing this evening, that the city clerk should count the protests, that the city staff, assuming that the number of protests do not equal 50%, should prepare some resolutions, plural, on proposed rate adjustments within the allowable adjustments that we could make based upon the proposed rates. Does that make sense? In other words, we have a proposed rate that is maximum, that we could increase the rates if we don't have the protests. Okay? But as I made a comment earlier, I'd like to have some resolutions that, should we be able to impose a rate increase, so that this council can choose where we raise the rates, and perhaps what infrastructure we put off, or whether we're going to do a rebate, or whether we're going to do a subsidy from the general fund, or just exactly how that might go. So my recommendation is that we do close the public hearing this evening. I don't know if we can reopen it at a later time, but that we close the public hearing tonight. City clerk, count the ballots, or the protests, certainly make it known to the press and the council people when that has occurred. And then we have, like I say, several options to increase rates if we have that ability, and have another public meeting, at a city council meeting, and then we can debate what it is, how it is we're going to raise those rates. But I think we should close the public hearing this evening.
So regarding the question of closing and then reopening and allowing protest in between, the city attorney was clear that once you close, on any topic, you can reopen, but relative to the Prop 218 process and it being a protest, once you've closed it, you can't take any more after that meeting, after that hearing's been closed.
Right.
So, just to clarify, so it's not something we could bring back. I would be open to moving the community forum up to the 10th, specific to the topic of informal water and wastewater rate discussions and options. And then on the 16th, having our final hearing on the matter, at which point we would close. So I would leave the option open to protest with the understanding and appreciation that the vast majority of our community will allow themselves to take in the information, educate themselves on the information before signing that protest, understanding that... I'll leave it at that. Larry?
Excuse me before, okay, Larry, but excuse me, Mr. Mayor, is that going to be made as a formal motion?
That's my recommendation at this point. I thought we could get to consensus. If not, I will make a motion after we're done with discussion.
Thank you.
Larry, I'm going to nip your question in the bud, because I know you're going to ask it. Unfortunately, the manner in which we entered the Prop 218 process for what counts as a voter or ratepayer, it must stand relative to the rest of this process, because that's how it began.
I understand. I think you're in error, but that's all right. The question I had is, how many ratepayers do you count on? What is your number?
16 some...
A little less than 1700.
Just under 1700.
Are the parks counted as, each one as one? Or do you count the 550 homes that are served?
One.
Three parks, three votes.
Three parcels, three votes.
And so you're saying you have roughly 3,000 homes in Calistoga on the service?
We have, I know we count the meters.
It's homes and businesses.
Okay, and businesses.
So if a business has a fire sprinkler system...
Because you only have basically 1,500 homes, basically. A third of those are in the mobile home parks, so you must have an awful lot of businesses that make up that difference. It's just, when you come to that count, what number are you going to use for the percentage of your count?
It's what we started the Prop 218 process with, which is the parcels with a meter on it.
Okay.
Not number of meters on the parcel.
Yeah. Well, you're using the word parcel, the law says property, and there's a major difference between that. Because us in the parks, we are property owners.
So Doug or Abigail, do you have experience in this, in other communities that have had single meter funneled to multiple properties, mobile home parks in particular?
Well, yeah, the law says one vote per property and one vote per parcel, so for large parcels, you know, some cities will only allow the property owner to cast a vote or protest. Others interpret it more liberally, so that anyone who pays, you know, is a ratepayer gets to protest. You have a 10-plex apartment building on one parcel, and one of those apartments protests in that particular instance, that would, the parcel would be a protest. So I think, you know, it's a matter of how your city attorney interprets it, and, but a lot of cities do allow mobile home park owners and apartment owners to submit protests.
Is there established law on that fact, or to that fact, that you know of?
You'd have to consult with your attorney, there's different interpretations, yeah.
Yes, yes, there are. I've personally looked, speaking with Michelle, yes, there are. There's been a lot of litigation, this is a constant issue with the state legislature, back and forth on what the intent of Prop 218 was, and that's why it continues to be, you know, that one parcel...
Which is why we adopted the position we did.
So another law passed with unintended consequences when it is implemented.
So how we entered the 218 process is how we, should we choose to continue the public hearing, is how it'll continue.
So are we done with public comment?
Public comment, or?
Public comment. Is there more public comment, or?
Nope.
Nope.
It's closed.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion.
Well, hang on a second. I'd like to...
It's not, it's not open.
I'm going to speak, and I'm going to say this. There's the issuer, there's financial duty, okay? And then there's democracy. And you people are elected, and it's about democracy. Yeah, yes, we take care of business, this is very important to do, to stay solvent, but then there is the duty to the voters.
Your point is made, thank you.
Yes. Right. And before you entered into this Prop 218, the way you wanted to enter into it, did you consult with the voters in the mobile home parks, the renters, who were not going to have any input on this? Did you consult with them? Or did you just, like, "Got to go for the money." Never mind who's going to vote, never mind if somebody's a registered voter, never mind if somebody's bothered to do that, to get up there...
Your point is made, thank you very much, we understand you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you really understand?
I understand enough, thank you.
I don't think so.
Vice Mayor Dunsford.
I move that we close the public hearing.
I second that.
Let's remember November, everybody. Who speaks up for...
Thank you very much, Charlotte. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Dunsford, we have a second by Councilmember Lopez Ortega. Can we have a roll call, please?
Could we restate the motion, just so I'm absolutely clear?
To close the public hearing.
Okay.
Now, that's, this is not approving, just so we're clear, this is just to close the public hearing and cease any further protests from being considered. This does not, this is not approval of the rates proposed, just so we're clear. That'll be for another discussion. Okay? It's not the same thing. The protest, just to clarify, the protest, the Prop 18 says this is the maximum, we could go, all the other options we discussed, allow that. A protest letter gives you no other option, Jerry, than to, you can't have anything. It doesn't allow us the opportunity to discuss the options, which we proposed tonight, which is why I'm strongly recommending anyone who hasn't signed one, or has, now that you have all the information that you consider that. So, Councilmember Barnes?
No.
That wasn't my roll call, I'm sorry. I thought you had something else to add.
Sorry.
City clerk, can you do a roll call on this, please? This is just to close the public hearing, this is not to make a decision.
Yeah, go ahead, do that.
Vice Mayor Dunsford?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Aye.
Councilmember Barnes?
No.
Councilmember Kraus?
Aye.
Mayor Canning?
No.
3-2?
3-2.
Okay, so the protest period of the public hearing is closed. We will move on to, on February, sorry, January 10th, we will have a community forum to discuss other options, and on the 16th, we will have the final comment or hearing on the rates. Again, folks, this is not an approval, what just happened is not approval of the rates. What it does allow us to do is consider all of the options, up to and including not having any rate increase. Okay? Thank you very much. We'll move on to adjournment of the meeting, to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be February, sorry, January 16th. Thank you.